Welcome everyone, are we all here? Peter Scott's missing. Councillor Mackay's missing. I am determined to run this session on time and not have to catch up on councillor Scott's tardiness. He's not here to, he's not here to listen to it. You're fine councillor Mackay. Thank you very much then, we will resume our hearings for this afternoon. And the first person I would like to call to the table is Suki Thompson of the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust and Banks Peninsula Native Forest Climate Change Group. Welcome back again.
Excuse me, I'd just like to express my interest in this group. Okay, so Tim and Craig, thank you all very much for giving us this opportunity to speak today. I'm speaking to two submissions. The first one is from the Banks Peninsula Native Forest Climate Change Group. And the second submission is from the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust. There is some overlap between those submissions, so I will address, not, I will address the overlap once, not twice. So first of all, the, and I'll introduce sitting next to me, Bruce Hanson, a trustee from the Morris White Native Forest Trust, that is the group that owns the Hinoi Reserve. And Bruce is a member of the Banks Peninsula Native Forest Conservation Climate Change Group. So yeah, this Banks Peninsula Native Forest Climate Change Group is an informal collaboration of ecological experts from a range of organisations. We've listed all the organisations who participate on the front. Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust, Christchurch City Council, ECAN, Lucas Associates, Monarchi Fennoa, Land Care Research, Morris White Native Forest Trust, the QE2 National Trust, Orion New Zealand, and the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust is the coordinator of the group. Now we'll say that the representatives from the Christchurch City Council and ECAN did not take part in writing the submissions to the councils, but when we've been working on submissions to other things like the government's climate change advice, the emissions trading scheme, those people have participated. And the reason this group came together in 2019 was we really wanted to find ways to optimise and incentivise the sequestration of carbon in naturally regenerating native forests. And we have been working on that by making submissions to government, having MPI down and so on. And what we're really trying to do is to change the change the work of biodiversity restoration from one of philanthropic, a philanthropic pastime to a profitable land use, so that changing marginal land for native biodiversity restoration actually becomes something that landowners find financially attractive to do instead of carbon emitting pastoral farming activities. And we're talking here about marginal land and we're talking about trying to incentivise it on Banks Peninsula. 115,000 hectares, an awful lot which is very steep marginal land, is therefore not very suitable for pine and exotic forestry, but is extremely suitable for biodiversity restoration. So in terms of our submission from the Native Forest Climate Change Group, we support option one in your LTP, but we are asking you to go much further than you have suggested with your current level of funding. And we would like to see greater funding for biodiversity through greater incentives to private landowners to protect biodiversity, more assistance with pest control and more rigorous enforcement when native biodiversity is cleared and land purchase for conservation. We would like to see you introducing a mitigation stream.
One second, but could you turn your microphone off please? You're good, carry on, thank you, it was just one online.
Okay, thanks, okay, so what are the things we'd like to just draw to your attention is this wonderful report, Restoring Taiparaka o Rakaiha tuu Banks Peninsula, that was funded by ECAN and worked on by the Environmental Defence Society. We have been right through this report, we think it's an absolutely excellent report that you funded. It provides some key recommendations for Banks Peninsula at the end. And what we're seeking now is for ECAN to implement the recommendations in the report that you have commissioned. And in our submission, we're giving some practical ways that we think that you could do this. So the first one of those, one of the things that we'd really like to have clarity over when it comes to native biodiversity is distinguishing between planting native trees and allowing the natural process of regeneration to occur. And the reason it's really important to make this distinction is because planting trees is expensive, native trees, it's expensive, it's hard work, it's difficult on steep, remote marginal land. Whereas harnessing the processes of natural regeneration, as has been so successfully done at Hinoi Reserve, is very much more cost effective. So if what you want to achieve is native biodiversity over a landscape scale as opposed to little planting projects, then natural regeneration and facilitating that is the way to go. Now, it may take slightly longer in terms of years, but the end result is it's much cheaper. Therefore, you can do it on a much bigger scale and also you end up with a full range of biodiversity rather than picking and choosing what happens. So that's the first point that we want to make. We would like you to add mitigation as one of your strands to your climate change transformational opportunities. So this should not just be about adaptation, it should be about mitigation as well. And mitigation is where carbon absorption through native forest takes place. And we would like to see ECAN taking a leadership role in Canterbury to introduce and support measures that reduce emissions and absorb carbon. And the Climate Change Commission advice that came out, you know, just a few weeks ago, has now recognised the role that permanent, and we like to use the word perpetual, perpetual native forests will play in this by soaking up the residual emissions that we can't manage to reduce when we get to 2035, when we get to 2050. But what's important is that those forests have to start growing now because they're not going to start picking on their sequestration, you know, for quite a few years. So we need to get going on this, we can't put it off. So what we're looking to support that, because we're not quite there with the emissions trading scheme yet. The emissions trading scheme is, it's difficult to register naturally regenerating blocks in there. And so we're still looking for financial incentives from councils and government to help support people who are doing that natural regeneration process. And there are three ways that we see this can be done on Banks Peninsula. Increase funding for your Meoro Rakau stream that you have introduced. And in particular, we're suggesting that you increase operational funding for the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. They're here and they'll be doing their submission, but it's so effective, cost effective to support private landowners who want to do this stuff for their philanthropic reasons. Get in behind them, help them with the fencing and help the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust that is overseeing that work. Really important is increasing that biodiversity fund for fencing because fencing costs are high on Banks Peninsula. And if that's the barrier to achieving what we want, put a small amount of money into that. You've only put 100,000 in that pot at the moment, so increase that pot significantly. One minute, or for both of them? Oh, for the first one, yeah, okay. Purchase land for conservation through setting up a land acquisition fund or I'll talk under my Rod Donald Trust submission of another way that you could achieve that without a land acquisition fund. Extend funding for pest free Banks Peninsula and better monitoring and compliance. We don't like it when we see large swathes of regenerating bush being sprayed. And we think that that needs to, needs to come to an end now. So that's it for the Native Forest Climate Change submission. Do you want me to do questions for both at the end?
I think we'll have full submission and then questions at the end, thank you.
Okay, I'll move over to the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust now. I won't repeat what I've just said because the Rod Donald Trust is completely behind everything that that Native Forest Climate Change Group is saying. But what I will talk about under this one is our project Taipariki, which we came and spoke to you about a few months ago. That is our purchase of the two highest peaks on Banks Peninsula, Mount Herbert Taipariki and Mount Bradley. And we came and asked you then, would you please contribute to the capital purchase, $50,000? And would you help with the operational funding with a $10,000 grant per annum? Now, I have had your letter Jenny to say that this is all under consideration, but we haven't actually seen numbers in the long term plan and we're asking you to make sure those numbers are in the long term plan. We are working and I'm sure that we will confirm this very closely with Taiparua Nantitakee and Orshun Bradley Park to form, and they are the neighbours immediately below, to form a three-way partnership that will set up an appropriate ownership and governance model for this park going forward. We're working on a memorandum of understanding that we hope to have signed by the end of the month. And so we see that as a real way that ECAN can get in behind achieving some of its goals. And of course, as well as achieving some of the goals in this document, that park is also achieving your Bakaora Plan. And I think it's really important that when you've put all the effort into developing a really excellent plan like this, that you do then allocate some funding for projects that are actually manifesting the goals of this plan. So there's Taipariki, we also, again, going back to the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. The Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust developed this wonderful ecological vision 2054 Banks Peninsula. All the agencies signed up to it a few years ago. Now we need to see it being the strategy that we're all working towards. And then finally, the final point that I wanted to talk about under Rod Donald Trust was this idea of land purchase for conservation. This is, you know, in the time before it has become a financially viable thing for people, farmers to do. We're looking at land purchase and we know that ECAN doesn't purchase land for conservation. So we're suggesting perhaps another avenue for you to consider, maybe not this LTP, maybe the next LTP, is to give a cash injection to the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust because we've proved to be a very nimble organisation when it comes to land purchase. We're not hand tied like councils are by the local government act. If a property comes up that's appropriate, we can make a decision in a few days and be in there, you know, at an auction, at a deadline sale, making a bid. But just to give you an example, our funds are so stretched at the moment by Taipariki that when there was a large and very appropriate 500 hectare property on the market recently, we were not in a position to be able to go into that deadline sale process. So there's land out there that needs to go into conservation that's ideal for this native regeneration, carbon absorption, and we don't have the funds at the moment to buy it. So we'd like ECAN to consider that as well as this trust being a CCO of Christchurch City Council, that ECAN might fund it and it would provide a strategic land purchase vessel for you. So that's the main points I wanted to make.
Thank you very much. Two quick questions if there are any, Megan and...
Thank you very much for your submissions and just wanted to hone in on some of the comments and particularly the one here from Rod Donald Trust where you talked about, yes, talking about increasing funding. There's lots of increased funding asks for good things. Would you be supportive, we've had another submission where someone suggested a targeted rate or an increase in that funding to go to biodiversity, would you be supportive of that? Or of, or how would you see, where would we get this increased funding from?
Yeah, yes, so, you know, with the support that we've had for option one, your question was, do you support this kind of rates increase that's necessary to do this level of transformation? And we've said yes to that. And we think that what we're suggesting you add, like doubling the fencing fund from 100,000 a year to 200,000 a year, supporting the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust with an operational grant and the 50,000 for Taipariki and 10,000 a year for its maintenance. Those things are such tiny drops in the bucket compared to your overall spending that I don't think your targeted rate increase would have to, you know, be more than a point one of a percent again. So yes, we would support that by additional rates, but not targeted just to Banks Peninsula. Because the offsetting that you're getting on the Banks Peninsula would be for the whole of Canterbury because we're that marginal land which is much more difficult to farm.
Megan asked my same question.
Excellent, then thank you very much for your submission enthusiasm as always. I now ask David Miller to talk on pest management.
Tēnākou tō katoa, it's, it's good to be back among friends and thank you very much for the opportunity to make this submission. It's particularly good to be here in our community of biodiversity on the peninsula. And, and I hope, I always feel a certain sort of sympathy for councillors having to listen to endless submissions, especially when we're all asking for money. But I hope to give you some good news in this submission as well. We support the council's strong emphasis on biodiversity in the long term plan and endorse option one presented in the consultation document. In particular, we very much appreciate the council's support, leadership and commitment in achieving, to achieving the vision of a pest-free Banks Peninsula. We also support the increased emphasis on the council's biosecurity programme on preventing the incursion and establishment of pest organisms in Canterbury. And while plants and insect pests are outside the scope of pest-free Banks Peninsula at the moment, we recognise that control of these is critical to the long term outcomes we're seeking. As you all know, Pest Free Banks Peninsula is a partnership programme of 14 parties, including yourselves, formalised in November 2018. And the aim is to enhance biodiversity as well as providing cultural, social and economic benefits, not just for the peninsula but for all of Canterbury, as Suki has just said. The overarching goal is both aspirational and we think inspirational. It's going to require commitment, collaboration and an experimental approach. And our approach is working collaboratively, obviously, as we've done for a number of years, starting with the things we can achieve now whilst innovating, monitoring and adopting new methods. So we're determinately experimental in the way we're going about the implementation of the project. The primary mission is to maintain and enhance our unique natural heritage through the widespread eradication of animal pests. Like most biodiversity initiatives, it's got much wider benefits. It supports Niitahu values, community development and wellbeing and sustainable agriculture and tourism. The council's funding over the last two years has been absolutely instrumental in bringing this project to life. Indeed, if you didn't exist, you would have to be invented because you've been of such crucial importance to pest-free Banks Peninsula. Your commitment of funding of $3 million over five years has enabled us to raise $7 million from other sources. For the rural ratepayers of the peninsula who previously contributed to the community initiated programme for possum control, the contribution from other sources has grown from 30 cents for every dollar they paid to over 20 for every dollar. With our collaborations with other community based NGOs, Niitahu and agencies such as DOC, Christchurch City Council and Selwyn District Council, we've been making significant progress recently. We've had very effective operations towards the elimination of feral goats with further operations about to recommence following disruption last year because of COVID. We aim to eliminate feral goats within five years from the whole peninsula. We've had operational planning and community engagement for two world leading eradication programmes, one at Kaitariti and the other at the Extended Wildside. At Kaitariti, we aim to eradicate possums, hedgehogs, stoats, rats and feral cats. On the Extended Wildside, 26,000 hectares on the south eastern corner of the peninsula, the focus is on the eradication of possums and suppression of feral cats, rats and stoats. 14 staff have been employed in this project, full time staff, many of whom were locally based on the peninsula. Innovation is essential to our success and we're working closely with researchers and innovators from the Cockafney Project, Zero Invasive Predators, Lincoln University and the University of Canterbury. All this is possible because of your support. Although we're about animal pests, I would like to sow some seeds in this submission. The Pest Free Banks Peninsula Project Management Group would like to remind you all that Pest Free Banks Peninsula is a long term programme under goal eight of our ecological vision for Banks Peninsula. The initial vital funding from ECAN was for five years, but we're very quickly going to need to develop revenue streams that take us beyond 2024. We therefore respectfully request that the council considers how it might take Pest Free Banks Peninsula forward at the end of the current five year project. Just planting a seed for the future there. Additionally, we're mindful that a number of landowners we've been talking with feel that there is a possible significant additional burden on them. And so we would like to explore with, with you options for perhaps achieving greater equity in rating in the future, but that's for the future. Finally, the project management group of Pest Free Banks Peninsula is fully supportive of the option one provision for a contestable fund to support environmental project work by local community groups. There's such brilliant work being undertaken locally. We're privileged to work alongside, for example, the Rod Donald Trust, the Summit Road Society and of course Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. And we know that by our efforts, we're increasing demands locally outside of the initial two large project areas and that in the future, demand for our inputs is just going to grow and grow. But also welcome the opportunity to give the council a fuller overview of the programme, perhaps at a council workshop or a similar forum in the future as a community led landscape scale programme. We believe there are lessons we're learning that are relevant for other parts of the region. So we leave this offer open for your consideration at some other stage. So thank you very much.
Thank you David for a really good submission. I think your words sort of highlight the actions on the ground, that things are happening. One quick question from councillor McKenzie, we're making.
Thank you for your submission. You talk about suppressing cats, rats and something else, stokes and all, rather than eliminating them. Is that because you just don't think it's possible?
I'm a greenie, not a technologist. In the initial five years, we think that suppression is the best we can achieve in some of those species. We're going for eradication of possums, but we, we recognise we have limitations. And at the beginning, you know, we're trying to do a great deal with a relatively small amount of money over a very large area. And so that's why we're taking a determinately experimental approach. And we expect that not everything we do will succeed in the way we want, but we're hopeful that it will and at least encourages or enable us to, to learn from that. Suppression by the way means down to 1%. So it's, it would still be a very, very significant achievement if we get there.
Thank you, councillor Mackay.
Thank you very much for your submission and I seem to take up your offer someday soon. I noticed that deer aren't mentioned and yet we have obviously media reports and we've had conversations in there around the issues with feral deer particularly on the peninsula. I'm just wondering why they're not, why they're not as part of your pest management control? Because I can just sort of see the alignment with some of the other work that's going on in Banks Peninsula through the Rod Donald Trust and other submissions submitted from there. It seems to be if we can control the pests, then we may not need to fence, so.
It's a very good question, which I don't have a very good answer other than we had to prioritise those species that we could target in the first instance with known technologies. Now deer are a problem, but we haven't got, within the current funding we've applied for and received, we haven't had provision for targeting feral deer within that. So if we were to go for it, it would require an additional funding stream.
Thank you very much for that full submission.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time and ask next up Penny Canaby from Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust.
Kia ora katoa, namihinui o teneira. It's a pleasure to submit to you today on behalf of the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust. I should say that I am the very new chair of the trust, so it, 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 I've written a lot of submissions in my time, but I have to say this one was a, it was more positive than some I've written in the past and I think that is good news for us. What I'd like to do in the beginning, before I talk about the Conservation Trust itself, is to really just endorse the joint Climate Change Commission submission that Suki presented. There are a lot of issues in there raised that of course we support. And of course, David, talking about pest free Banks Peninsula. In terms of the long term plan, there's a lot for us to support. Of course, the acceleration of regeneration of the natural environment, facilitating diversification of land use and all of the, the leading of climate change resilience, we're absolutely behind that and including the statements about biodiversity. Look, I think there are two ways the trust can actually both does already, but can continue, we can, to support the aspirations and the long term planning of ECAN. And, and the first goes back 20 years when the trust was formed, where that covenanting authority that the Banks Peninsula Trust has, it has meant that we've worked now for 20 years with landowners on Banks Peninsula for them to covenant, choose to covenant their land and in doing so, protect it in perpetuity. And of course, the biodiversity values are very clear. And, and also the carbon sequestration, it's just exactly what we should do. And it was an absolute joy to see our first families who covenanted with the trust. The Helps family, who you would know very well, and the Johns family in Pompeii's pillar, in every bay right around the peninsula and including the port hills. We have generous landowners covenanting and that's one way that we need to support that to keep on happening. And I'll, I'll return to that in a minute. The other, the other is that the Conservation Trust, one of our signatures is that we, we bring people together because we're trusted by the landowners. The agencies, it's a trusted organisation, so we work with the agencies, the runanga with communities and volunteers. And, and we, everything we do basically is bringing together the power of all of those perspectives for the benefit of the environment on Banks Peninsula. We think that we all can do more by doing it together. And an example of that is the, the 2050 ecological vision for Banks Peninsula, of which you're a signatory. And basically, everything the trust does aligns with those eight goals. And, and we too supported the absolutely wonderful report that you commissioned, the EDS report. It is an outstanding report. If I could criticise it slightly, I think it falls away with the recommendations. I'd like to make them stronger and work with ECAN and the trust would be certainly very keen to do that. I'd like to make them stronger and work with ECAN and the trust would be certainly very keen to do that. So let me then move to, we clearly obviously support option one in your LTP and for the biodiversity and biosecurity, water and land and climate change and community resilience outcomes. So in specific terms, what are we asking for? You know, clearly the Pest Free Banks Peninsula is a giant step for the environmental benefits and biodiversity benefits on Banks Peninsula. And I can just, I think endorse what David said. This is a fantastic initiative from ECAN. It's a wonderful collaboration of Runanga, all of the agencies, landowners, crucially, landowners. And David has signaled that we really ask you to look at the long term. This is Pest Free Twenty Fifty. It would be an absolute tragedy, I think, if there wasn't long-term planning to support the Pest Free Programme. And look, it's a complete delight to see the teams working together. You know, it is outstanding and I think there are now fourteen people who've been employed. The trust has been working on that very hard because we're facilitating, you know, that project in terms of, you know, the staffing and the financial planning. And it's a challenge for us, so we need your support. We do really need some operational funding to support the lights going on. The team in the office, they're an outstanding group, but we basically, you know, can't function on, we do need the support in terms of operational support. But also, we'd ask ECAN to really work to look at how we can support landowners. To basically two things, one incentivise them to, you know, covenant their land. And at the moment, the ETS is counterintuitive. You'll see that from the Climate Change, Joint Climate Change Mission. Really, there's no incentive for, there's more incentive to plant monocultures and it's exactly what we shouldn't be doing. The EDS report says that. So what we would like and request is financial support from your biodiversity fund that will go straight to supporting landowners with fencing, with management plans, pest management plans, it dovetails with Pest Free Banks Peninsula. So with all of that, you know, I really do feel we're into, you know, a very exciting part of, you know, supporting the biodiversity and some of the major environmental issues that we face on Banks Peninsula. And I just think we should back ourselves that through collaboration, we can do more. And I think the EDS report really does say it all. It's a great beacon to guide us in the future. Norera, tena tato kato.
Thank you very much. Two questions. Councillor Marshall?
Kia ora, thank you very much, Penny. Just a question, you've asked just now for operational funding and some support around incentivised actions for outcomes. Do you have any dollar figures around that? We can't see them in your, or just your button, please, sorry.
I haven't, but I would, in that we've asked the city council for an ongoing operational budget of fifty thousand, that would be about the amount that we hugely appreciate. It would make a huge difference. And I think it doesn't seem a lot of money in terms of what we're actually getting from it. And I think the trust has a good history of good financial management, so that, I'll put a figure on it, fifty thousand.
Thank you. Council farmed questions been answered. So thank you very much again for your positive submission and coming in today and making it. I now ask Mark Christiansen, if I put my glasses on, Project Oversight Group, Pest Free Banks Peninsula.
Thanks, Chair, and just declaring an interest because I'm in the group.
I'm the chair of the Project Oversight Group for Pest Free Banks Peninsula. You've heard from Dr Miller, who is the chair of the Project Management Group. The other doers, the Project Oversight Group is a group comprised of senior appointees from key parties who are responsible for monitoring the delivery of the project. And that includes the deputy mayor, Councillor Farm, two members, one from Uanuku Runanga, representing Runanga, and the senior environmental advisor from Peirunanga, a district councillor from Selwyn and the regional director from the Parkland Conservation. The purpose of our submission is twofold. First, it's simply to reinforce the submission that you've heard from Dr Miller about Pest Free Banks Peninsula. But secondly, it's to encourage you. And that is to encourage you that the funding that has been already allocated to Pest Free has been fundamental to making a difference already. I can tell you that nationally, this programme is being recognised alongside other landscape scale projects such as Taranaki, Hawke's Bay, Waheki and others. And so the government is recognising that this Pest Free initiative is up there along with these other landscape national projects that the government is funding for Predator Free Twenty Fifty. It's an excellent example of how collaboration can work. And I think we can learn from what's happening at Pest Free Banks Peninsula. We can learn for other collaborative things in this space. It's early days. You've heard that there are fourteen employees, but most of the work to date has been around planning. And there's an amazing amount of work going into planning before the actual on-the-ground activity starts. And of course, that's critical in terms of getting both the objectives sorted, but also making sure that there's practice and practicality around how those objectives are met. So in terms of the council's view and of having a step change in biodiversity, I can encourage you that this is exactly the sort of initiative that will achieve a step change. Not across the entire region, of course, but in this area, it is really making a difference. So you should be encouraged. And as you'll hear, no doubt, on each annual planning submission, there will be more and more good news to be had. Of course, killing things isn't the objective of this. This is really just a means to an end. And that end is around thriving biodiversity for this part of the region. There's an example of how biodiversity could be thriving throughout the rest of the region. So it's about having Tuie back in central Christchurch. It's about being able to get up on the port hills and across the peninsula and see and feel and hear that thriving biodiversity. So we've really started the journey and it's been started by environment Canterbury in conjunction with the government, so thank you very much. We look forward to being able to tell you more successes as we go.
Thank you, Mark. Questions? Megan Hands?
Thanks very much, Mark, and it is a good news story. It's nice to see that you're gaining more funding because of funding before. Just so I have in my head, in terms of the cost of the vision overall, what sort of money are you talking to? Have you quantified that to get to the vision that you want to get to in terms of having Tuie here in town and that?
Yes, it's way bigger than the money that we've currently got available over this period. And it's a thirty-five year vision really to get to twenty fifty. So look, there may have been, I haven't, I'm not aware of it, but it's a lot of effort and a lot of resources.
Thank you, Mark. If there are no further questions, again, a really positive submission. You had a good run. Thank you. I call next Mari Gray from Summit Road Society. Welcome.
Tena kato, nera timi maioha kia kato. My name's Mari Gray and I'm speaking on behalf of the Summit Road Society. So the Summit Road Society is a grassroots conservation organisation formed in nineteen forty-eight to further the vision of haria. And that was to restore and protect the port hills and provide for public access. So we own and manage four reserves on the port hills and we also lead the community and backyard trapping project Predator Free Port Hills. So we support option one. And the reason we do so is we are facing a climate and ecological emergency. And there is a pressing need to see improvements around freshwater, around pests, around protecting existing dog biodiversity, restoring degraded habitats and responding to climate change. So again, we really want to commend ECAN for their vision around supporting Pest Free Banks Peninsula. It is an aspirational programme, it is an inspirational programme. And I think it will be a game changer for not only predator control on the peninsula, but all of Canterbury. Because there are so many lessons that have been learned through this landscape scale predator control programme that can be applied to Canterbury and to New Zealand. So the Summit Road Society is a partner in this initiative alongside ECAN and many others. And our particular emphasis is on leading community trapping efforts on the port hills. So we lead Predator Free Port Hills, which is a backyard trapping scheme for the most part. We've now got thousands of tracks out across the port hills. And this is about local people taking local action to restore our biodiversity and bring back our birds, our vertebrates, our lizards. And you said about Tuie, over lockdown, we had a Tuie come visit Mount Pleasant. And one of our trappers, one of our trappers had it in her backyard. And she got it on video and we shared it on Facebook. It went viral and it got picked up by the press because people were so excited about the opportunity that Tuie are back in the city. So there is a real enthusiasm from the public for taking local action to restore our biodiversity. So with regards to the long-term plan, we're really pleased to see the focus on healthy waterways and a more consistent and a focused approach to freshwater. To see the programme around strengthening Meiru Raroko. You know, there is a big need to kind of restore, protect and in some places, plant indigenous forests. Not only just around climate change, but also around biodiversity. And we've been really busy around our Vika Valley planting project. Some of you might have seen it. We've got Lindar Woods Reserve and Heathkit, two hundred and thirty-three hectares. We're planning to plant thirty-three hectares in a lowland potacar forest. And this is on the edge of the city. Unfortunately, we have few options around allowing native regeneration, just simply because there's like no seed source. Those hills are beer. And so it's a massive task ahead of us to replant that. We're getting started in May with forty-five hundred trees and our fingers are crossed for a big Jobs for Nature project to plant forty-five thousand over three years. So we'll see where that's at. The other thing we really want to acknowledge is the support for regional pest management, including plant pests. You know, I spoke last year about the ongoing funding treadmill we're on to deal with plant pests. And one of the issues we're dealing with in Ohenetahe Reserve is spurvalarian. But the list does not end there. We've got Nacella Tassic in Lindar Woods, we've got Boxhorn, Hawthorn, Aman's Beards, Mindawery, like weeds are such a huge issue to deal with in terms of protecting our biodiversity. I was just delighted to see the provision of the contestable fund for community groups because that is a fantastic use of resources. Because in many cases with community groups, they're able to achieve a great deal with only a small amount of money because they are able to leverage off volunteer efforts. And also to acknowledge the importance of supporting environmental education and Enviro Schools. So we had the privilege of working with Enviro Schools recently in Pakora on a community day with the Enviro leaders of the three schools around Pakaropo. So that's Littleton, Diamond Harbour and Governors Bay. So kids did a little clean-up, looked at freshwater quality, we did some tracking tunnels of predator control. Now, these kids are enthused about taking action to protect their environment. And actually, these kids are the ones who are going to lead this into the future. We're talking about Predator Free Aotearoa Twenty Fifty, Ecological Vision Twenty Fifty. It is these kids that are going to carry it through and that's why we're really pleased to see the support for Enviro Schools. And I just want to point out some of the other challenges we are facing as around feral pigs and deer that's been mentioned. We at Omaha Bush, that problem emerged really after the fires. It's been there before, but it really exacerbated after the fires. We've been fortunate to receive some private sponsorship to put deer fencing around our bush and we're going to undertake a cull. It's a really challenging issue, but I just want to make you aware that feral pigs and deer are a significant threat to the understory of the bush, but it is actually not possible with the funding that's been allocated to Pest Free Banks Peninsula to tackle that very difficult issue as well as goats and quite a lot of deer and extended wild side. So I think that sums it up for me.
Thank you very much, Mari. Two questions. Councillor Clearwater, your question?
Thank you very much, Mari, and for your ongoing work. I just wanted to ask you about the deer fencing particularly, because it seems that from what you've said at Omaha workshop, it was really expensive, a hundred thousand dollars, but it looks like it was essential. So I'm just wondering, would you see other areas, other parts, say of the peninsula, which might benefit from the same treatment of fencing, even though it is very expensive?
Well, pigs and deer are different issues. So what's been instrumental about the goat programme is there has been agreement from landowners to eradicate feral goats. And I think we can probably get there on pigs as well. Deer is another matter and that's why we put a fence around Omaha is because we could not get a consensus in terms of neighbours about seeing it as an issue that some people, that we should all deal with. Some people actually want deer. So it's a very, very complicated and challenging issue. In the meantime, our bush was being destroyed, so we took action. So I think there is a place for fencing while we get there in terms of the social licence and the social conversations. But I think the next step is pigs and then deer.
Thank you for your submission. I know you own and manage four reserves. Do you derive an income from any of that property?
Not much of an income. We get two thousand dollars in grazing from Omaha and we get twenty-four thousand in grazing from Lindar Woods, which is being used to replace all the fencing. So yeah, we operate on the smel of an oily rag. Yeah, so we manage them for conservation purposes.
Thank you very much. Okay, submission. That brings us to the end of the Banks Peninsula Appreciation Society. And the wonderful work that you all do. We couldn't comment. We now move to an online submission. Barbara Gill.
First.
Are you there, Barb?
I am. I'm right here. Can you see me and hear me all right? Lovely. I can hear you, John, but not really anyone else.
That's good for you. So I will switch by Michael and let you speak.
Well, first of all, I just, I've really enjoyed those submissions from all of the people from Banks Peninsula. And if Timaru wasn't so damn beautiful, I'd be tempted to move. I am submitting as an individual, not on behalf of the group. And my submission, which you may have read, is very brief, but just relates to the, what I see is the huge importance of maintaining our My Way public transport system, which we've had since, had for just over a year now. So I think that first of all, I really, I'm option one all the way. I really appreciate your drive to look at biodiversity, at pest control and kind of have a catch-up on things, so I'm fully supportive of option one. But my particular interest for this submission does relate to the public transport. And I just think the importance couldn't be greater than it is now as we're really driving to move to a lower carbon economy that providing public transport is essential. And I'm very aware that if we lose My Way... And I'm very aware that if we lose My Way, we will probably be left with no public transport at all. And I think, I think My Way has been a bit of a shining star. And while I understand that you are subsidising to a huge degree every journey that a passenger takes, I am really hopeful that we will be able to increase the use of My Way quite considerably over the next year or two. So that your subsidy will reduce as passenger numbers increase. And I really, I think it serves our vulnerable populations really well, particularly in our older people. We're getting interesting requests that they need the bus to be able to drive around the retirement village to pick people up. So that's quite a, that's quite a big market for us here. So I think that's lovely. And as we're looking to improve our central city or town, as I get growled at for calling it a city, our central CBD area, increasing public transport options and reducing our reliance on cars, I see as a really important part of that too. So yes, fully support option one. I've worked out the difference in rates in my home. And we're in the fortunate position that we can manage that. And fully support all of your initiatives. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions from Peter Scott, Appreciation Society of Timaru?
Fantastic work, Barb.
Thanks. All right. Well, if there are no more questions, carry on the good work. I'm actually at work, but I've enjoyed sitting and listening to all those submissions. And while I'm not ready to leave Timaru yet, Banks Peninsula is sounding fantastic. Thanks very much. Enjoy the rest of your hearings.
Thank you, Barbara. And we certainly have had a number of submissions on My Way from Timaru. So a very engaged community, which I suspect you've stirred up along the way. So thank you for your submission.
Thanks a lot. Bye, John.
Bye. Next on the list is Purua mooring association, Chris Hutching. Is that correct?
Yes.
And a PowerPoint submission with that, is there? Or no, just a submission. Thank you. So the button makes your microphone go live and when the button is red, you're live. So.
Okay, we put in a written submission which should be with you. I've got copies of it here, if not. I'm a member of the Purua mooring association. I'm its assistant treasurer. And next to me is Larry Burrows, who is the secretary. This is a group that was formed about more than 20 years ago to represent our interests and help with the maintenance of chains and blocks of concrete on the seabed that hold the moorings. Now, this is not the Littleton Marina, for those of you who aren't very familiar with boating. This is on the other side of the harbour, next to Diamond Harbour and Poonan. The number of PMA members, Purua mooring association members is about 100, although there are not that many boats there at any one time. Most yachts own by hobbyists like myself. Often they've got little or no market value, but friends and family really enjoy them. The locals also enjoy them. They're a community asset. They've been quite an inspiration for artworks, calendars, photography, just to give you some background. Now, we were a bit surprised, to say the least, of a proposed new annual levy of $57.50 for the potential removal of potential wrecks. Now, this was hidden on page 268 of the LTP. And when one of our members spotted it, he was a bit alarmed and drew it to our attention. So this new fee comes after ECAN doubled the mooring fees last year, doubled them. Now, what's going to happen to this money, which we estimate is going to bring in about 40,000 a year? Will it ever be used? Will it ever be refunded? I think we know the answer to that. Now, we've never been advised about this. The harbour master's never discussed it with us. They've never talked about it being a problem. Now, Larry and I have both owned a little boat each in Purua since about 1975. And we have never encountered any problems with wrecks. There was one boat that sank about 18 months ago. It was removed. It did not break from its mooring. It was removed as an insurance job. It did not cost ECAN or anybody else any money. There was a wreck off the New Brighton coast about two years ago that had nothing to do with moorings or anything to do with any of the marinas around Christchurch. Now, new extra heavy chain and block specifications were brought in in recent years. They are inspected annually, every year, and our group does its best to assist. And just to show you an example of what these chains look like on my boat, that is the top chain. The next chain down is bigger again. And the next chain down below that, the third chain, is bigger again with about this big of lengths. They are attached to a block of concrete, which is about that long, that wide, that thick. Now, the chances of, every boat in Purua has got this arrangement. The chances of them coming adrift are pretty slim. Now, boats are generally insured. And this is another option that the harbour master could explore if he was worried about it. He could say that having a mooring requires proof of insurance. We can't see how a new levy or tax can be imposed for a what if situation maybe in the future. Surely it must be tagged to specific work. For example, farmers don't pay a special levy somewhere in case one of them causes some kind of damage somewhere. And the rest of them, excuse me, all end up paying for it. It doesn't work that way. Now, car owners do not have a levy imposed against them in case a car owner dumps a car in a riverbed. That's not the way it works. This levy could even be counterproductive. If there isn't a responsible owner who's lost interest in their boat, they might think they've paid a levy to dispose of it, so they're going to walk away from it. So in summary, this is a new tax for a non-specific purpose. A kind of just in case something happens tax. We don't think that sits legitimately for the purpose of raising taxes. So we think it's not justifiable and needs to be shelved. And I'd like to call on Larry, who just has a couple of wee points to finish off.
So just what Chris has said. The doubling of fees last year by ECAN has raised the cost of, to about 20% of the value of my boat. And this will add it to about 30% of the value of my boat per annum. For a task that I already pay for in my general rates. That is picking up rubbish around the ECAN district. During the 46 years I've had a mooring in Purua, I've never been affected by another wrecked, abandoned, sunk or derelict boat. We accept that from time to time, there are instances where boats become abandoned. The costs of removal and disposal of such vessels is the responsibility of the boat's owner. And clearly, it's the role and capability of regional council to see that that happens. And ECAN maintains records of all boats and mooring owners for that purpose. According to the press on April the 12th, there was a list that said 98 abandoned cars were recovered by ECAN last year using general rates. And it was for the benefit of all Cantabrians. Are abandoned cars the responsibility of all car owners? Should car owners be levied for picking up the rubbish? In the same article, 62 tonnes of rubbish were recovered by ECAN last year. Are the individual landowners where it was dumped responsible for it? That's totally fair for costs of recovering, disposing of abandoned vessels to be paid for by the general rates on the rare occasions that the owner can't be enforced. Because it's also a service to the whole region and it helps maintain the regional environment. This proposal, which wasn't forewarned, is shoehorned into page 268 of the LTP with no warning. Sounds like a slush fund. It's unfair to shift costs such as this to vaguely related law-abiding, specific user groups who are not affected and have no control over the behaviour of others. We recommend retaining the status quo and support the valuable service to the whole district that ECAN does by removing derelict cars, boats and other rubbish from the local environment and continue to efficiently use general rates to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your submission. You've raised some interesting points for us to deliberate on. Are there some questions? councillor Marshall, councillor Marshall?
Kiara, thanks very much for your submission. Button at a time, sorry. But I appreciate your enthusiasm. So you've suggested no moorings without insurance and that a document be signed requiring people to confirm they've got insurance to access a mooring. Are you confident in the social structures within your mooring community that should someone's insurance lapse, there's enough social pressure that they then regain that insurance? Or do you think that's something we should be policing? If you can press your button again, please.
Well, it could be, it could be pleased by simply requiring an annual invoice to the harbour master just to prove it. That would be easy enough. Our members are the eyes and ears of the harbour master anyway. One of our members lives directly above the moorings, sees them every day. We have other members doing work in and around the place and most of us visit there once or twice a week.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, thank you for your submission and coming in. We now call Dave Laurie. Yes. A verification of some.
Councillors, just to let you know, Mr Laurie sent an email of some documents last night. I forwarded to you his.
Bless you, Mabs.
Anyway, it's an email that came at half past eight last night from me and it's Mr Laurie's presentation today and some supporting information.
Hi, Kiara. My name is Dave Laurie. I've sent the documents there in relation to my qualifications. They were separate. But I'm not sure if any people had a chance to read. It relates to investigative skills. In various arenas, I've been an expert in investigation around the world. And I think those documents kind of show you. Reason I'm raising is I'm coming to this particular request of your council from a different angle. The angle is that having articulated my background, look at how CC, Kuaia City Council has managed to create the current land planning and pollution creating benefits that CIL have at the airport. I can only come to the conclusion that there has been foul play on various levels. I've raised this with them personally and they refuse to investigate at this stage. But I just want to make clear that, maybe a small example, I could take the whole timet's giving you examples. But I'll just give you one example. So city council, who is the enforcement agency for noise and pollution and has a group of abatement personnel, cannot conclude in their wisdom that the engine testing on wing at where CIL have aeroplane engines prepared, then just that aeroplane is parked outside the hangar and rev it in the small hours of the morning to full power for long terms. They cannot conclude that that's an industrial noise. I doubt anyone in this room could think that it could be anything else. But you're being paid for repairing the motor, you know. Your engineers are working and being paid for it. You then strap the motor on the aircraft engine, park it with no mitigation source on the airport and rev it in the small hours of the morning for long periods of time. Could anyone in the room decide that's not industrial noise? This is the stupidity that we're sort of fighting against at this level. And really it's sad because we shouldn't have ratepayers spend a lot of time and energy having experts come in. The outcome of that one word, not industrial, is that CIL currently enjoy a metric, which is measured by. So it's an LDN metric. And then they exclude all the Defence Force aeroplanes from that metric. And then they measure it by, they average it over seven days. Since when is a pollution person allowed to average its pollution? The New Zealand law indicates that it should be an LEQ measure, which requires under section 16 of the RMA, at source mitigation. So the one word to the counter deciding it's not industrial noise changes the entire arena. That's just ludicrous. So that's the sort of investigation I've been doing. I could honestly keep you going for hours here on examples, but I won't. But what I will turn to is an equally ridiculous 50 dba noise contour, which has been used to exclude all residential building for literally hundreds of hectares around the airport, noise contours. Now, if I turn that microphone off and start. For those who can't hear me, we'll go back to 65, shall we? This is how ridiculous this is. Not only that, when you actually exclude background car noise, you will find that the background noise on the land that has this 60, this 50 decibel exclusion rule is already a 56 decibels, excluding road noise. So at a population of 20 persons per hectare, the background activity already is at 55 decibels. Now, you may not have it, but I've got a copy because I wasn't sure your IT would be up to it. But there's a rule statement from John Paul Clark, who is a world leading acoustic expert. But he basically tells you exactly these facts and concludes, it will come to you, that 56 decibels is an entirely suitable area for residential development. One has to smell a rat when no other airport or jurisdiction that can give powers in the world has a 50 decibel activity exclusion zone around any of the airports. Nowhere in the world. Confirmed from John Paul Clark at all. So it's not a coincidence that our airport enjoys this benefit through ownership. Kuaia City Council owns 75% of the airport, obtains a huge dividend every year from it, near $40 million. Except for last year when they were buying tariffs, which I'll get to in a minute, because they were allowed to not pay it last year. Incidentally, their CIL gets $100,000 a year. None of them took a cut during this period of pandemic because they are different. They certainly are different. The enforcer in Christchurch, the city council of noise pollution, and the person that makes the rules about land use is unfortunately lost their way in the dark by looking after their own company. As a result, they have unfortunately caused a huge problem for themselves in that huge amount of development could have occurred, they could have rated for and creates funding streams for the work that needs to be done. Instead, it's been pushed to Rollaston. Rollaston loves this sort of rule, but it's growing like crazy and rating people like mad and doing well. I think really the point I'm trying to make is, and I can prove it because all this is documented. I spent years putting it together. So it will be proven. It's an actual car section at this stage. Because the RMA requires that landowners' land use rights are reasonably considered when considering these issues. When you add up the fact that we're being polluted at night and on top of that, they have an ear noise engine testing contour, which further victimises the landowners. So not just being woken up at night, but there's rules around their land under engine testing contours that reduces their land use, one point. And that landowners cannot build any residential property at a 50 decibel level, second point, and it goes on. It all adds up to a systemic corrupt assistance around the airports, not having any curfew risk and having the ability to continue just growing. For example, that engine testing noise I just told you about is one of the reasons that Nelson's engine testing closed down. And it, because their council was having trouble with the engine testing noise. And they'll now come to Christchurch, there are no rules. They can pollute as long as they like at night because the metric is an absolute rubbish metric. So what do I want? Why am I here? I've been here before. You people went here. They were a government bunch. They listened to me very politely and did nothing. So I'm kind of hoping that you all listen to me politely and do something. You're on my ear, okay? We're going to challenge you and Mr Paul to actually do something about what we requested. And I think there's some joy that we will do because I realise you people received a hospital pass and lots of cases, so we're not being unreasonable. I asked back in 2018 that the required reevaluation of the contours be carried out. Required because it was agreed under the Experts Panel's agreement that every 10 years there'd be a reevaluation. And the chair of that panel was John Paul Clark, who's a world expert, I explained with this all say statement. And we'd actually met with John Paul Clark and we know the whole background about what occurred. And they knew at the time that the contours even then were not correct. So what I'm going to ask for, that's what I'm going to ask for then. First of all, I'd like ECAN to put aside a budget to have the fight that's going to relate to having them reevaluated. I want the evaluation to actually be carried out immediately, which I understand is, there is a fairly good opportunity of that occurring. And there's been some movement asking CIL to do that just recently. This reevaluation needs to follow the process. The process was set out in the Experts Agreement and CIL and council will try and change that process. They don't like it because the entire fleet of flying aeroplanes, one of the variables, no longer flies. And they're having a complete capacity number at the airport as part of the variables. So those two variables alone will change the contours dramatically. Last time it was done, 14 years ago, the xenocystic contours decreased by 24%. This is unnecessary land being locked up that can use high density residential land in the crisis for absolutely no reason at a 50 decibel. It's actually, well frankly, if we don't get it done this way, we'll go to our section. Because that's how bad it is. And the evidence we've got is just straight up. Straight up, this council preferring its own organisations to get very, very beneficial land planning and pollution rights. So there we are.
Here, here.
Thank you for that. A question from me. Under what legislation do you believe we have the opportunity to challenge this, given your research?
Sorry?
Oh, yeah, the red light next to the buzzer.
No, we need to record it, so yes.
So I've made a point, I want 50 years. But anyway, it's the regional plan document that you've set. The reason that actually all the other councils have to obey by this rule is your planning document. It's in my notes here, but that actually overrides all the other councils and makes them abide by that particular rule. You are also responsible and have been under the Act to actually review these issues. And I didn't thought I'd come here asking and poking fingers as well. But in my document, you'll see what you're required to do, which you haven't done.
Are there any further questions? No, thank you for that. That's clarified for me the responsibilities. Thank you for your submission and I now ask Lyn Anderson to come to the table, please. Press the button. That one.
Yes. And we've got some pictures for you today. Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to submit to you today. My name is Lyn Anderson. I'm the CEO of Arana Wildlife Trust. And sitting beside me is Nathan Portku, who is our Public Relations and Fundraising Manager and any other hats that we need him to wear as a small team. The reason that we're here today is to, obviously we've submitted, you've all read it, so we don't intend to go blow by blow. We're seeking ECAN's support in the long term plan through a partnership funding model with other local councils. Obviously, we're an incredible community asset. We significantly contribute to economic development and recovery, driving visitation to Canterbury. It's really important for our community and their wellbeing that people can participate in the activity, offering unique experiences and our aim is to connect to people with nature. Of course, we are very involved in conservation work for New Zealand native species and we're very proud to be a key contributor to six core Department of Conservation recovery programmes with some of Ayatiri's, Ayatiri's most critically threatened species. And in particular, you'll see a picture there of Kakareki Karaka. Just in this breeding season alone, we have produced over 27 fledglings that have been released to the wild. So we're a key contributor to conservation in Canterbury. Of course, we're not just a captive facility breeding for release to the wild. We have also progressively developed Arana as a habitat and we are delighted to be working very closely with ECAN. We are a remnant, a remnant... We've got a remnant population of Canterbury's potted skank, pictured in the slide there, which had been thought extinct since the 1980s. And ECAN are working very closely with us on protecting that population. Recently, we have also discovered we have a remnant population of Canterbury boulder copper butterfly, which is another endangered species. And so we are progressively developing a habitat. Over 20 species of New Zealand natives now live and breed in our grounds. And more and more, some amazing species are coming. This is, of course, a royal spoonbill and it arrived last week and it's still there. It hasn't left yet. So of course, we're also known for our exotic species and we've got many critically endangered species from around the world. And we are contributing to genetically healthy, sustainable populations. And pictured there is the addax. There's only 100 left in the wild. So they're the only ones in New Zealand as well. Education, of course, is a key part of our work and we are committed to fostering the voices of young citizens. Coming to the key point, running a modern zoo is expensive. And to ensure the long-term viability of Arana into the future, we must secure sustainable levels of ongoing operational funding. And we need to be moving towards paying our people the living wage as a minimum. We have a lot of professionals and they deserve that. Despite COVID-19, significantly increased costs mean it's not possible to cover operational funding through the gate any longer. And no other major zoo in New Zealand is able to achieve that. Just want to highlight some comparisons here in terms of how lean and mean Arana is for the major facility that we are, being one of New Zealand's four major zoos. The figures speak for themselves. 16.5 million a year to run Auckland Zoo, 8.3 for Wellington, 6.2 for Hamilton. 5.1 is our aspirational budget, which would allow us to pay the living wages a minimum. Our current budget is 4.8. It would be less, but fortunately in the last 12 months, from the Department of Conservation via the Wildlife Institutions Relief Fund, we have received some funding for this financial year. So thus why we're here, because of a long term plan. Looking again at the other major zoos, the annual contributions from their local governments, Auckland nearly 8 million, Wellington 5 million, 4.5 for Hamilton. Last year, we received increased level of funding from the Christchurch City Council of $350,000. It is not sustainable into the long term, although of course we're very appreciative for the city council's support. On top of that, capital funding, we raise 100% of the funds for all capital projects. And looking at the other zoo, 15 million a year for capital developments and maintenance, 2.5 at Wellington, 6.4 at Hamilton for the next year. So again, what we seek, we consider that Arana Wildlife Park is a key regional asset and also an important habitat for species. And we're seeking and proposing a council partner funding programme through four LTPs. So this is the first of four submissions we're making. And as an idea, we're proposing through ECAN's biodiversity fund that some of your increased funding, $250,000 a year, be applied to Arana Wildlife Park. We're seeking the same from Waimea Makauri and Selwyn. And of course, we're seeking $750,000 from the Christchurch City Council. Of course, all councils benefit from Arana because it is a truly, it is truly a Canterbury facility rather than just Christchurch City. So we need your support and we urge you to give consideration to finding some dollars in the biodiversity funds for Arana in the long term plan. So thank you very much for considering our submission today. That's the end and questions would be welcome.
Thank you very much for that. I have questions from councillor Cleewater and Southluth.
Thank you very much, Lyn, for your... I just wanted to ask you, really making it clear that you see Arana Park as a Canterbury facility. And I'm just wondering, have you done any surveys that would indicate that visitors to the park actually, you know, where they originate from within Canterbury? Have you done any survey? Is there any information like that to let us know that?
Sure. Thanks for the question. Yes, we've just done a major visitor survey just this summer gone where we look at all sorts of measures of satisfaction, of course, but also demographics of where our visitors come from, particularly in terms of the Canterbury region. And from the last survey, which was 2018 compared to this one, we're certainly seeing a lot more regional focus, if you like, rather than, say, just Christchurch and our mix. So our statistics that we're seeing from our visitors that are coming through would definitely suggest that it's Canterbury focus.
Is there actually a percentage increase from your data gathering from your survey?
I get the right button. Yes, particularly from the last survey in terms of domestic visitors to the zoo. We're looking at about 45% as about 33% from about 2018 to the survey just come. And then in terms of where they come from within Christchurch, we're also seeing a lot more spread out amongst the regions. So typically we've seen north west or south west Christchurch, whereas at the moment we're seeing a lot more regional focus coming to the zoo, so around the region. But yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering if other zoos, do they have any schemes whereby local residents who are contributing to the rates that contribute to the zoos have reduced access? Because it is quite expensive for many families. It's beyond their affordability to come. And if they're contributing rates as well but can't afford the ticket price, then there's a bit of an equity issue there. And I just wonder if you've thought about how that might be addressed?
In terms of the ticket price, we keep it family friendly. Yes, the adult entry price is higher than any other major zoo in New Zealand, but that's a reality because we just don't have the funding. And it's a very expensive organisation to run. We have a great value annual membership pass for families where they can visit as often as they like. And also a family concession pass where up to two children come in free to keep it as family friendly as we possibly can. But I can sit here and say that with current low levels of funding, we cannot consider discounting. And that's just a reality.
I'm asking that with the thinking that if they were rate funding, then maybe there could be some opportunity to review those balances that it's done us for, I believe.
Kiara, thanks so much for your submission and I love the comparisons to the other, those as well. Those are great, great information to look at. I note the work that you do with the Department of Conservation on the recovery, species recovery groups. Do you get any funding through Department of Conservation or governments and government tourism?
The short answer is no. We have a four-fold mission, which is providing a quality recreational facility for the community, conservation work in support of endangered species, education particularly for the young and research. And so because conservation is a core part of our mission, it's something that we do. But there's also a yes at the moment due to COVID-19. It was recognised by the Department of Conservation that organisations such as Arana do so much for all of these habitat restoration programmes for Kiwi, Kakareki Karaka, et cetera. Well, generally, the birds fall release, are bred in places like Arana. And so the department came up with the Wildlife Institutions Relief Fund and our funding for that runs out on the 30th of June this year. But that is the first funding that we've had.
Thank you very much, team, for Arana Park, for your submission. Appreciate that. And now call... Leah Rayhorn from Christchurch International Airport, submission 1277.
Good to talk to you. And hopefully we're on tackling that. I'm the Sustainable Transition Leader for Christchurch Airport and have been chosen to come along and speak to the ECAN long term plan. Of which I'm really happy to do so because we're really supportive of it. There's so many aspects of the long term plan that I think have really nice collaboration between what we're trying to do at the airport. And I think speak overall to the National Climate Commission pathway, the national program, and then how you fill that, filter that down to a regional level. And then we're trying to, I guess, mirror that as a business. And also, I guess, see in addition to that, what we could be doing behaviourally to support that. So recognising that there's a governance, a business and a behavioural aspect to addressing these issues. And yeah, so I would like to speak to aspects that we found very encouraging about your long term plan. Firstly, option one, the Kofiranga Tahi option, we thought was preferable. And basically just because it goes further and is more ambitious. And I think speaks to the urgency with which we need to address these issues. I'll try. I'll try and predict. So on climate change and resilience, community resilience, I think there was a really nice alignment with the Climate Commission pathway. And I think at the time of reading this, we just finished the Climate Commission pathway piece and we're looking also at the city councils' long term planning and climate piece as well and saw how these can all work together and... piece as well, and saw how these, how these can all work together and encourage further action. So we, we found it really encouraging. We think a reduction-adaptation-just-transition model is really important for how you address this and liked the increased ambition on climate action and regeneration. From a Christchurch Airport perspective, we're trying to mirror that. So we started with the reduction and in the last year alone, have reduced our Scope 1 emissions by 90%. And that's with addressing our industrial heating, so swapping out our diesel generators for a ground source heat pump system. And then in terms of our Scope 2 emissions, we are looking at renewable energy generation on-site and see that as another really interesting collaborative piece that could assist the entire Canterbury region. Then we're looking at how we can influence our Scope 3 emissions and primarily for an airport, of course, that's going to be aviation, but it's also our land transport emissions. And so we're looking at how can we get more people that come through and, and transport being a network? It's not just, people don't just land, you know, they have to get into other modes of transport. So how can we support them to get off planes and pick a good public transport or active transport, zero emissions option that's accessible, that's safe, that's appealing and zero emissions? So we see the climate piece and the public transport piece is going hand in hand and are very supportive of, of your acceleration in the public transport space than the multimodal transport choices. In particular, an interest in Route 3, obviously, because that's one that gets to the airport. And anything that could make that more appealing, whether that be increasing the amount of time, increasing the frequency, but also doing a bit more to champion it so that people realise it's there and use it. Another key aspect, and you can kind of come at it from either angle, is the accelerating regeneration of our natural environment. And I think that's so important, whether you look at it from planetary boundaries framework, which is where we often come at climate from, we think, okay, what about biodiversity loss? What about our oceans? This regeneration of our natural environment speaks again to multiple issues. And of course, for the airport, we think about, well, why are people visiting the South Island? Primarily, it's for our pristine natural environment, of which we all know 100% pure isn't really 100%. And we've got to do what we can to look after that environment. So it's really encouraging to see the thought that has gone into areas that could use increased regeneration, whether that's native species, braided river revival, wetlands revival and the regional tree planting. And I think it's really key to look at these hand in hand with climate change because otherwise you risk mal-adaptation. You might have a situation where you're looking at offsetting, so you do pine plantations, whereas actually you could also address biodiversity by doing native plant species. I wanted to shine some light on some people that I think are doing really important work that we're working on, with, working with at the airport, and that being Dr Colin Merck and his 360 Urban Trail, a piece which I think speaks to talking about our natural environment, working to regenerate it, and also educating people and showing them what we have in terms of, I guess, an amazing natural environment right here in our region. John Priest, who's a wetlands specialist, and the incredible work he's been doing on regenerating wetlands, and Dr Brian Patrick for the work that he does on endemic species protection. And then I also wanted to tell you, a little bit similar to Arana Park, we have a dryland habitat out at the airport that I'm particularly fond of. And it has that native boulder copper, boulder copper butterfly. So I think there's a nice collaborative piece on recognising these unique natural environments and figuring out how do we protect them? And then finally, the regional strategic leadership, engagement, collaboration and involvement and working together. And I think as an airport, as, you know, one of the larger businesses in Christchurch, we're really interested in making sure that we're working collaboratively and supporting you in these programmes. That's, that's probably as, as much as I wanted to add for now. Although I do recall an earlier submitter being mindful of noise contours and terrace airports. So I thought perhaps I would just very briefly mention, without wanting to necessarily invite a huge amount of questions because it's not my area of specialty. But another area that, apart from land transport, that we are looking to influence is our Scope 3 emissions in relation to aviation. What kind of work can we do as an airport to help transition aviation away from fossil fuel dependency? So as an airport, we have the infrastructure that supports aviation. So we're looking at what infrastructure does low emissions aviation need in the future? And that's what terrace is about. It's about providing infrastructure for low emissions future aviation. So it's actually a key climate adaptation piece. And just to add to that, zero emissions aviation is electrical hydrogen fuel, which is really quiet. So hopefully that will help placate some noise contour issues on industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Two questions, councillor Clearwater.
Thank you for your debitation. And I was very interested in how you work with, you'd like to work with councils collaboratively. And you're also with your support of multimodal transport courses, particularly PT. So I just wondered, like, and I haven't been to travel on that, the airport bus since COVID stuff, but I just wondered if there might be ways that in fact, public transport might be able to be given more prominence by CIL, given especially like the, I guess, the powerful influence of the car storage and parking? Just if there might be some ways, for example, that whether it's through signage, and I know there's a whole of signage, or other ways, in fact, that could be more, public transport could be clearer at the airport.
Great question. I would agree with your angle there. So we're doing a terminal precinct plan, TPP, which speaks to the master planning for the airport. And that will include changing the way people come in, but also looking to design that for future needs. So actually, electric vehicle needs increased, hopefully, wreckage transport, public transport options. So all of that will require input into our TPP so that, you know, we are getting more people on buses.
Thank you, Claire, for that submission. Wonderful to have it.
Pleasure. Thank you.
As Sean Liston.
Good afternoon councillors and thank you for the opportunity to put my views on your long-term plan and what I view as your absurd proposed rate increases by which you make fun there. Together with my wife Lynne and two of our sons, we own and operate two irrigated dairy farms in the Murray Basin, which are managed by the boys. And Lynne and I manage a dryland support, dairy support block at Loburn. All of our business supports eight families. And under your proposal, we will pay a rates bill of $14,500. As per my written submission, I am horrified by the proposed rate increases, whether it be option one or option two. Have you considered option three, which I hope will become evident during my presentation? The rural communities face a barrage of ill-informed abuse and blamed for all the ills relating to water. And this proposal will only reignite and inflame the urban-rural divide, which I feel was just starting to come right. For many years, I've had sleepless nights over this division and have spent considerable time and effort through various forums to better inform those with misconstrued views of farmers and farming and its impact on society. I honestly believe that recently, we have started to feel like a more unified community. Then, I read an article from your chair, Jenny Hewie, basically telling Christchurch or urban residents that their rate increase will only amount to 2% to 3%. You do not have to be a rocket scientist to work out if the average rate is 24.5% increase, where and who will have to bear most of the pain. I implore you to make better use of the UAGC. Using option one as an example, you have the ability to go to 30% of the $143 million rate take. That is around 43 million. And when divided by the approximate 289,000 rating units, this equates to a UAGC of around $144. To me, this is a great deal fairer and more equitable than the paltry $25 annual charge that is currently in place. By raising the UAGC to this new level, the programmes that the community demand, such as leadership, climate change, youth engagement, parks and recreation and biodiversity, are funded by all individuals because they most certainly affect each and every one of us equally, not because of what or how much we own. I have heard the affordability argument before, but to me, affordability is a function of central government, not regional councils. You are there to provide services through your rate take, not to introduce wealth taxes. My other concern relates to public transport, particularly as it relates to Rangiora. I raised this issue at a consultation meeting in Wipra and was stunned at the response I got from councillor H. I have observed many buses travelling through Rangiora with maybe one or two passengers on board and questioned the wisdom of that as it relates to carbon emissions. The answer I got was, hey, that didn't really matter because it was 51% funded by the government. As someone who's worked very hard to get where I am today and pays a considerable amount of tax as well as rates, I was astounded at the councillor's reply and his obvious lack of respect for how my dollars are spent regardless of whether it's rates or taxes. And then I'm left to think just how much business acumen is there around the council table and how much thought has really gone in to what I call an absurd rate increase proposal? Thank you.
Thank you for your submission, a strong submission, well articulated. I of course don't have an opinion. Are there any questions? Bar too loud. Are there any questions? Councillor Marshall.
Kira, thank you very much for your submission. So you've identified that neither option are affordable as far as you're concerned. So what would you suggest we perhaps will deprioritise or do you think through shifting the burden to UAGC, the rates will be more palatable?
I believe that option three, by raising the UAGC to that level, would enable you to enact option two. Are there any further questions? None. Thank you for your submission. Thank you for coming in today. Next on the list, submission 589, Brooke McKenzie.
Good afternoon. Before we start, I'd just like to point out that we have had no landowners on the West Hand side that ever saw this notification of this meeting. We would like to see the submission time reopened because a lot of people, we only heard about it five days before and everyone rushed and a lot of people never got a submission then. And by accident? So thank you. I'll do the first one. My name's Brooke McKenzie. I'm a semi-retired businessman. I have lived at 602 Yodhurst Road for 36 years. I've never in that time had a problem with aircraft noise. In fact, the modern aircraft are far from a nuisance, hardly noticeable, and in fact, quite enjoyable to watch with the big ones. As I said, we were only alerted to the long-term, ECAN long-term submission five days before they closed. There was no notification. I understand from ECAN that there was no specific mention of contour re-evaluation. This led to a contact mission of as many affected landowners as possible with copies of a submission put together in tandem with another landowner being Dave Lowry. You will have received several submissions similar in content. All landowners are of the same opinion. Advertising the plan was inadequate. I was here to represent myself, but things have advanced where I'm actually representing several landowners now. And one submission that was not allowed, I have circulated to you that, and that was representing nine landowners. So Mrs Lillian Franks has also given me something that I would also like to get copied and passed around because she never had the opportunity to get a submission in. So I'm going to get Bridget to carry on from here.
For the past 30 years, the landowners have not had an even playing field. In fact, putting it bluntly, CIAL has had their knee on our necks and always bet on the fact that they and their major shareholder, CCC, had enough financial grunts to bankrupt anyone who contested them. ECAN is also to blame as they have supported the contours surrounding the airport, restricting subdivision and development to under 50 decibel contour. Of course, these rules are selective, with exemptions being given to Kaipoi, Rolleston and of course Clearwater. Clearwater is in the 55 decibel zone and continues to develop rapidly. Other developments are creeping into the 50 decibel contours, such as Yodhurst Village and Football Academy. Very different strokes for different folks. It should be noted that the American FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, the outer boundary for residential development be set at 65 decibels. This is a standard, international standard. Nowhere in the world can I find restrictions similar to those imposed on landowners surrounding CIAL at 55 decibels or lower. CIAL, this company is simply a law unto itself. It has always had grandiose ideas of being the Heathrow of the South. In fact, it is nothing more than a provincial airport. And again, a fact that for tourists, it is no more than a transit centre with tourism nights averaging one. They claim that they are the economic centre of the South, where for every dollar they earn, the region earns $50. This is simply rubbish. CIAL is no more than a property development company in drag. They have granted their space zoning, which allowed industrial commercial development for air-related businesses. Their Dakota Park and Spitfire Square are full of businesses that have no relationship whatsoever to air-associated businesses and all developed within the 50 and 55 decibel contours. In fact, they now have 77 properties that are creating income within the same noise contours, which exclude surrounding landowners dividing or developing their properties. Two of many glaring examples showing the disdain that they hold for surrounding owners. They built the Novotel Hotel. Their acoustic experts stated the noise level acceptable in a bedroom of that hotel was 50 decibels. but not acceptable outside at our properties. This property development company is thinking ahead and there is a large block of land that runs from Dakota Park to Ryan's Road that they are trying to buy from the existing owner on four year deferred payment. This land is outside their space zone, but their intention is very clear and it's not farming. In two thousand and seven, a group of so-called experts gathered to formulate the contours projected out thirty years. The results were regulated by the major shareholder, C C C. The import was fairyland stuff that defended adamantly by C I A L. A hundred and seventy five thousand aircraft movements per year, noise based on the aircraft mix of the time. At this point, I suggest anyone who is genuinely smelling a rat, go to www.christchurchairport.co.nz and look at their master plan. And at the same time, look at the obscene salaries we are paying these people. It's interesting reading, lots of pretty pictures and flowery presentations. Take a look at the projections, which are still fairyland stuff, no longer the hundred and seventy five thousand movements in two, in twenty forty, but now a hundred and eleven thousand movements, down sixty four thousand. Pre-COVID two thousand and nineteen year, they had twenty, seventy two, six hundred and ninety four movements. In two thousand and seven, projecting that it would be twenty forty, a hundred and seventy five thousand. A hundred and eight thousand more movements than current, but now reduced to forty four thousand more movements at a hundred and eleven thousand. With COVID twenty twenty, forty five, seven hundred and thirty nine movements. On top of this, the old first and second generation bangers have been replaced by a measurably quiet fleet. So in a nutshell, the original input data was terribly inaccurate and the wide contours were extremely exaggerated. But that's not all. C I A L, with grandiose ideas to be the Heathrow of New Zealand, realised when utilisation of both the main runway and crosswind runway simultaneously were unsafe practice, decided that a parallel runway to the main runway would be required after twenty forty. And so you will see from the master plan that a second runway would be regulate, by regulation would be built two thousand metres, two kilometres west of the main runway. I believe that's ECAN land for the parallel runway. This eventuality would dramatically change contours and further confirm landowner arguments. The earthquakes hit C I A L, but tourism started booming and recovery was reasonably rapid and peaked in two thousand and nineteen. But C I A L projections had slowed as they were losing flights to Queenstown. If the tourist boom continued, knowing Christchurch was a one night transit for tourists, they knew another airport to the south would happen in the tourist preferred areas. They knew full well if this happened, it would change the dynamics of international flights and C I A L would be a major loser and continue to decline. I'm actually going to go to here, regulatory. Here it is, a total disservice to landowners. A total review of contours was to be undertaken within ten years of the two thousand and seven primary review. It's never happened and it's now five years overdue. ECAN is meant to be the driver of this review. On top of that, after the quakes, there was legislated a three year revision was to take place and publicly notified. Again, this has never happened. Should be ashamed of yourselves. Was identified forty, fifty years ago that the natural expansion of the city would be west. A predatory airport company, a major shareholder, by quite frankly, shonky means, changed all that to the severe detriment of a natural expansion.
Can I have another half minute? Half minute? Okay. Seven thousand people have taken into the spaz zone every day to work at a hundred and twenty businesses owned by the airport. People can go into that zone and work in fifty five decibel areas, but we cannot develop our property in a fifty decibel zone. Now, people say everyone that comes in here wants something. I hear everyone wanting money and of farmers polluting our water with their dairy. But what do I want? I think you remove the ridiculous thirty and fifty decibel zones, just throw them out the water. Get C I A L away from dictating to the owners, put them on an equal playing field. I don't like it. I don't like being dictated by a Christchurch City Council owned company. And if people want to get their land rezoned, bit them then without C I A L on their neck. Put in a submission to council and get rezoned. It's simple as that. Get them off our necks, get rid of them. Fifty and fifty five decibels, I'm talking at sixty five right now. Okay.
Thank you, Brooke, for your submission. And I've said you've run time, so so no questions. You are the second. Strong conversation. Not even one question. We have heard you. We understand. Thank you. We heard you. Yes. Next, we have Michael Salverson.
Yeah, I'm Michael Salverson. And just a little bit of background, like many of us around the table here, but not all, of course. And I'm a relatively recent immigrant from Canterbury. I've not been born and bred here. And we came here, we love it here and it's a great place to live. And as I assure you, agree around the table. And we have a farm in the Upper Heinz Ketchment. So the Heinz is obviously notorious, but we're Upper Heinz Ketchment and on the hill where we farm sheep, beef and deer. And, and so then we moved on and so I put myself, we put ourselves into the community as well. So I've been chairman of federated farmers in Ashburton and also in the wider Canterbury area and been involved in many other community organisations. So slightly nervous when this new plan came out and had a look and I was advised that you could look up this new rates calculator. So I did look it up and discovered that initially that my rates were on the farm due to go. I'm lucky I'm not a dairy farmer. Heavens, or I should be a dairy farmer because our rates are due to go from nine thousand up to sixteen, which is a rise of eighty five percent. So I made a few more inquiries and was assured it was wrong. And a week later I had another look and they've now gone up to twenty one thousand, which is a rise of a hundred and sixteen percent. And my first thought that came to mind was to quote John McEnroe. And you cannot be serious. And apparently it was. So then what's it all for? And I discovered you're going to rewrite the Heinz plan. And so I wonder if whether the council had such confidence in their staff and the plan that was already written that they felt it should be rewritten? And or should they go to the government and say, look, look, guys, we've already got a plan here? And how about we run with this for a while? And there are other plans obviously written as well. Is this really necessary expenditure? And I don't know. I've heard that not many representations have been made to the Environment Ministry about the current plans that we have and this is, this is best use of our money at the moment. And I would suggest might have to do a bit, but it's certainly not all completely necessary. And rates rise at this level and then obviously we read the paper and discover it's rates are going up by the price of a cup of coffee every week. Well, twelve grand is a lot of cups of coffee. And so I thought then last night I was listening to the radio because we were in the car. And Mr. Hunt, who's the Human Rights Commissioner in New Zealand, was being interviewed about this visit to the Mongrel Mall at the weekend. You may have heard some of it. And he talked about three things. All beginning with, ah, there's rights, there's building relationships and there's owning your responsibilities. So rights, obviously, and that's one particular one, which is why he went to the Mongrel Mall, was not to be discriminated against. And we as farmers feel that we're very much being discriminated against with these rate rises that have been put through. So question, you could question whether it's fair, you could question whether it's discrimination, either actively or passively. And building relationships, putting rates rises up like that through us is hardly a good way to go forward. One thing we will be doing on our farm with rates rises like that is we will be withdrawing all voluntary native plantings because we have to cut corners somewhere. So if you're going to hammer us on one side, well, why should we bother? You know, it's not, not as if you're sending the right signals to us to continue to look after our places. And responsibilities, we have responsibilities to each other and relationships and yeah, I'm just not sure that it's the right way to go forward. So I also went through a quick list of and doing these plans and working for the government of one sort or another. Government's got all the different levels, of course, and some of which cross over and some don't. And just a quick list, we have N P I with food safety, animal welfare, disease monitoring, all of which require detailed record keeping. We have Osprey, which is Nate. And disease monitoring, which is T B. And Nate requires extremely accurate record keeping. We have statistics, statistics NZ who require annual submission, which requires more record keeping. We have the Environment Ministry who are introducing grazing rules, fencing setbacks if we haven't already got them. Wetland fencing, which means bulldozers on hillside, which means rocks falling down into creeks, weed control. Who's going to do that? If you force us to fence off the creeks, why should we do the weed control when some of the stock did that weed control naturally? And we've got farm environment plans, which requires record keeping consultants, more fees. We've got S N As, significant areas of significant nat- natural interest or whatever they are, and which requires more fencing with wetlands. We've got trees, we've got bristleinas, we've got kophies, we've got all sorts of things, we've got skinks and skunks, no skicks, not skunks. We've got freshwater crayfish and limestone creek. And it will be further up in the Heinz River, but limestone creek, we've got freshwater crayfish, bullies, mudfish, whatever, they're all there. We have the health and safety from central government, which requires more record keeping, processes, equipment, staff training, time off work. We've got education, which is staff training, government with I T O. We've got young staff, we've got, we don't have immigration, immigration staff, but other farmers do, which is training, records, staff shortages and so on and so forth, which is bringing more problems. We've got the I R D, we've got M I N B, which is housing and environment. The staff have houses which are leased, so they now have to comply with minimum standards. It's more compliance, record keeping. And we have carbon budgets to come, which requires a completely different budget to a farm environment plan. And we don't know how we're going to approach that yet. Regional government, you've got implementation and monitoring of only some of the above. You've got consents, monitoring costs. Now, the government's told us we're going to have to go to consent for various things. What do you do? You put on cost recovery. So not only do they have to pay to do it all, you'll now pay us for checking it's done right, charges rather. We've got local plan compliance. The goalposts are always moving. Now, if I'm taking penalties, it's not handy if the goalposts are like that, but you're not going to hit the goal very often. We need consistency. We need targets, we need long term targets, which is fine, but we need consistency of policy. And the best, on that basis, the best farm plans will be out of date very quickly, especially on areas like mine, which are more sensitive. And then you've got district government. So you've got information of some of the above, regional and national government. You've got S N As, which is theirs, you've got rural zones, you've got internet. And with all this stuff coming, there's not enough data coverage for us to do it all online because that doesn't work. We still live up a shingle road that's got more bumps in it and whatever, but that's not your responsibility. I know that. And going back to the real basics is that most, that's a long list of stuff, but most farms are small family businesses. My, me and my wife, we employ three people. And between Nikki and myself, we have that long list of stuff to do. How do you think we're getting it worked up? Yeah, it's getting a taller and taller order. And I'm quite resilient because I've been involved in a lot of these things and so on and so forth. But a lot of people aren't nearly as resilient as I am. They're more sensitive. They haven't got the mental capacity that I've got. They're under pressure, under severe pressure. And we know of some who crack. And, and the government's saying, we'll just put more money into mental health. Sorry, doesn't cut it when the Environment Minister's saying you've got to get your crops in by the first of October. If it rains on the thirtieth of September, you can't. And then you guys say we're not compliant. Where do we stand? Got any questions?
Thank you, Michael, for that impassioned submission. Do we have some questions? Councillor Southworth?
Thank you for, for your presentation and I do hear the difficulty. What I am, I am curious and we've heard quite a bit today about urban rural divide. And I'm just wondering, what, what, I'm trying to understand the basis in which Christchurch City, specifically urban residents, should step up and pay more. And just also just to clarify that residential, it's residential rating units, which means all of the small towns, any low value property will all pay U A G C. But just to understand what the rationale is for, for the city specifically being picked out to pay for predominantly rural stuff.
I think it's probably about going through your budget a bit more carefully. What do you really need to do? And one, one thing about these rate rises is there's going to be a huge amount of money sucked out of, on the current forecast, sucked out of the rural community. So I don't know if Grant Robinson knows this, but his tax receipts aren't going to be quite so big. Because, yeah, the money can only be taken by one lot of government whites. It can't be taken by both. And the dairy farmers, you know, we all hear about the milk price, which is fairly buoyant. And deer prices are down forty percent, cattle prices are down twenty percent, sheep prices are down ten percent on last year. We're simply, yeah, money's tight. We don't make much money. And we might have a high capital value place, but we don't make money. It's, it's hard in the hills. I think more general, I mentioned that obviously the regional plans and I think a serious chat with David Parker, the minister, would be to find out where he sits on it and to find out exactly where him and his officials sit on redoing some of these plans, which yours, you, you, well, some of the councillors here. And, and obviously the people in the Heinz district and other plans put a lot of work into and a lot of time into and came up with a pretty comprehensive plan going forward. And to redo the whole thing and throw it out, probably get the same staff to do it again. And doesn't show a lot of place in your current staff. I wouldn't think. And so, so that would take a money out and public transport's been messing the paper while I've been sitting in the corner over there. And it's a dog's breakfast. We all know it is.
To be clear, it is targeted rates that pays, just to be really clear.
Thank you, Michael. If there are no further questions, thank you for taking the time of coming up today and bringing us your submission. And we have one last submission before a cup of tea. Fishing game, Emily and Angela. And they have a PowerPoint.
And just to note, Louise, I'm not sure, I'm a licence holder, so I don't know whether it's on the register or not. But no more interest than anybody else.
Excellent. That's right. It's an interest. Thank you.
I'm happy to note interest noting that.
Kenekoto, my name is Angela Christiansen and I'm presenting on behalf of the Central South Island Fishing Game Council, along with Emily Arthur Moore, presenting for North Canterbury Fishing Game Council. And we'll just be speaking in support of the submission that was lodged jointly by both councils. And we'd just like to point out that the ability for fishing game to undertake its statutory obligations is heavily dependent on the health of the habitats and ecosystems in which they live. The first topic. The first topic. There we go, O2 Fodakai, and this has been brought up in the past and we feel that it's very important and that it's highly dependent on an effective statutory framework being in place to guide land use in that area. There have been a number of reports produced by both the Department of Conservation and ECAN that indicate a high number of high country lakes are in danger of collapsing, with many of those not meeting the land and water objectives. Continued momentum in addressing this situation is critical. Fishing game seeks that work around sensitive and high country lakes is prioritized and adequately funded. And we believe that this work should begin immediately and it is our view that it cannot wait until a 2024 plan review. And Emily will touch on this a bit further, or sorry, shortly, in her points that she brings up. The next topic is about the Hakataramia River and the Waiteki Allocation Plan. And it wasn't clear to us in the long-term plan how this sits within the planning framework. But the Hakataramia River is the major tributary to the Lower Waiteki River and has significant values. Yet the rules in the Waiteki Allocation Plan that are directly related to the Hakataramia River have not been reviewed since 2006, which is over 15 years ago. Fishing game believes that the obligations of ECAN to review the Waiteki Allocation Plan in accordance with section 79 of the RMA and the council's obligation to review planning instruments every 10 years under the RMA has not been met. The Infinity Environment Court decision, which was met in 2017, found that the Hakataramia River is over allocated and is continuing to deteriorate. And at a recent consent hearing also related to the river, ECAN staff considered, quote, "that the large volume of water already allocated in the catchment has resulted in a flow in the Hakataramia River, which is already substantially altered from the naturalized flow." The independent hearing commissioner for that particular hearing also declined consent related to the abstraction and use of water. So fishing game continues to seek that the Hakataramia River flow and allocation regime is part of the upcoming planning review process and that it's properly funded to give effect to the MPS freshwater and to protect the significant values of that river. Our next topic is around managed aquifer recharge. And fishing game opposes projects such as managed aquifer recharge or targeted stream augmentation that use ECAN funding that supports abstracting water from our Alpine rivers. The Rangatata River in particular is protected by a water conservation order for its outstanding values and characteristics. And the protection of these outstanding rivers should be paramount and something that the community is proud of and that ECAN upholds. Continued investment in exploring ways to abstract more water from these rivers is opposed. And fishing game do not believe that the spirit of the water conservation order is being appropriately considered and acknowledged. Fishing game believe that funding for these types of projects could be directed at, say for instance, any gained irrigation efficiencies could be redirected to MAR rather than expansion or that further research into other options such as sustainable land uses in that area could be considered.
So Angela was mentioning the state of some of our high country lakes and, you know, you'll be familiar with the recent report that ECAN produced showing what the big issues that exist up there and Angela touched on the Ashburton Lakes and the decline, the record decline that's happening in those lakes. And we've sort of had the message back from ECAN that there's really nothing that can be done under the current regulatory framework that exists and that we, apart from voluntary measures, that we will have to wait until there's a plan change. And as Angela said, that's going to take quite a few years for those changes to come into effect. These lakes just don't have that amount of time. Once they start shifting and really start declining, the degradation is actually quite hard to reverse. They're very sensitive. And we think that there are actually some things that can be done now. And we think the farm environment plan system is a way that changes could be made. So the Ashburton Lakes, the stations that operate around that currently, we are told, are all achieving A and B grades for their farm environment plans. And yet obviously this is not having the desired effect on being able to reduce risk to the lakes. And we think that improved implementation of FFPs could really help. So I've mentioned there. The top point. That we think there should be a performance measure that is a target where a certain percentage of farms receive an A grade. Currently, there are performance measures around the number of farms that are audited, for example, in the LTP, but not the number of farms that receive, you know, a high grade. We also think there's real potential to actually look at developing some good guidance around the mapping of, mapping of risks such as risks from sediment runoff, for example, on in FFPs and the mapping of the interventions that are put in to address them. So we receive, oh, sorry, just. Schedule seven in the Canterbury Land and Water Plan. It goes into what sort of things are required in a farm environment plan. And one of the things, one of the aspects of it is that there should be a map or aerial photo at a scale that clearly shows a number of these issues, sorry, features such as the location of things like intermittent rivers, streams, lakes, drains, the location of riparian vegetation of fences, the location of critical source areas, so they're quite specific about what needs to be shown and it needs to be shown clearly. And that's partly so that it can be audited effectively. And yet the farm environment plan maps that we're seeing, we don't think really are at a level that can, that can enable this to occur. At Fishing Game, we are only party to farm environment plans when they are submitted as part of the farming land use application. So a farmer applies for a farming land use consent and we isn't get to have a say as sort of as an affected party. And we often request the FEP because there aren't usually any conditions, well, very few environmental conditions placed on the actual consent, they're all bundled up now in the FFPs, as you're probably aware. So we get sent these FFPs and we look through them and it's, yeah, we think that they're quiet. We think they could be done a lot better, I guess is all I'm saying. But having said that, we don't get to see them once they leave ECAN, so they can be updated and amended and they're supposed to be, but Fishing Game don't have access to be able to see that. Neither do ECAN, they're not held with ECAN, they're held with property owners and auditors. But so I've asked to see examples of maps, you know, we say, well, have they improved? Do they improve after they leave ECAN? And I've been asking for this for some time, but I've been yet to, I've yet to be showing a map that really addresses these, these issues. I would love to see some examples of it. This is one, oh, sorry, we've actually got 20 minutes that we were assigned. Oh, when we, that was an email we sent and you replied saying we had 20, but that's okay, we can, I can, I can speed up a little bit. And so as you can see from that map, that's not showing critical source areas, it's not showing the location of intermittent waterways or anything like that. And that is prepared by a consultant, it's typical of the sort of maps that we see. I won't go into this slide, but this just shows some of the very sort of general wording that we see in FFPs that we feel must be pretty hard to actually audit. The last point that I'll address, and then Angela has got one other point to raise, is that we would like to see some more funding put into adequate staffing to enable the rollout of the NPS for indigenous biodiversity. We've been, the ecologists tell us that most of the remaining low gradient land in the high country that hasn't been cultivated and isn't irrigated would classify as an SNA if it was properly assessed. So that's a lot of land, that's a lot of land to cover. And the staffing, the resources are just not really, we don't feel currently there to be able to enable all of that work that's going to have to be done to assess this, this amount of land. And the district councils don't appear to be employing people to do this either. So I think this is an area that really needs a bit of attention.
The last point that I'll just discuss is in relation to the fees and charges policy. And this new consent fee structure is of particular concern to us or to other organisations or community members who may wish to undertake environmental restoration or enhancement projects. So recently, we've lodged a consent to help restore ecosystems and waterways. We were told that the cost to do so was almost $10,000. And to look at some of the comparative, I guess, fee charges. So we could lodge a consent for, to discharge dairy effluent for more than 1,000 dairy cows for 4,700. Or we could undertake a high-risk farming land use for 4,500, but to try and clean up waterways that can be caught from damage caused by potentially high-risk land uses, it costs over double that amount. And so we think that a review of the consent fee structure, where the purpose is for environmental restoration projects, should be reviewed so that it does not become a barrier to people wanting to undertake this type of restoration work. Other alternative options could be dedicated contestable funds, where people could apply to help offset these amounts. Or, you know, perhaps in a, in a new rule framework, such as the NES for wetlands, that any restoration projects must fit under certain criteria or guidelines to be a permitted activity. So that's just one very recent experience that we've had and you can see the, the two comparative sites up at Deepstream and Mesopotamia of the work that was undertaken by Fishing Game and in conjunction with DOC and ECAN in 2012 and then a year later in 2013, the kind of benefits that this work has for, for our ecosystems.
Thank you for your presentation. We are running well and truly late. Thank you for coming in and we have had the information that you have presented to us. One question only.
Very much a question of clarification. You say you don't support MAR or TSA where it's taking extra water out of the river. But if that water was used, was, was available because of irrigation efficiency or something, it has no impact on extra water being taken from the Alpine River, you would support those sorts of projects?
Yes, so if the water is already, if you have deficiencies for game and irrigation, which I think you're coming from, yeah. If farmers chose to instead of expand an area to invest that into MAR, Fishing Game would have the water allocated for other uses.
Thank you very much for your time. We will take a break for 15 minutes and come back 10 minutes late, so at 20 to four, we will start again. Apologies to those that are here and I hand the chair over to councillor Marshall.
Yeah, everyone's here, so we'll kick back into it. And apologies for Jenny Huey this afternoon, she's had to run off to do other chair things, but we very much appreciate having both Neil and.
I believe she'll be on.
She'll be online, so she will be joining us, she just run home. That's Jaren Harjic says. His name's Nickler, so we'll crack right into it. Welcome to our colleagues from Ashburton, Neil and Liz, sorry, I don't know where I got Sharon from. Over to you, you can just hit your button to kick off.
Thank you, Kilo Koto, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and councillors. And thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today and I have with me Deputy Mayor Liz McMillan. And for those who don't know, I'm the Mayor of Ashburton, Neil Brown. I appreciate you having busy time with submissions and hearings and it's always fun, isn't it? We are here to speak in support of our written submission that you have received already. We have four key areas that we'd like to expand on. One, the overall rate increase. The first of which is the overall rate increase proposed in your consultation document. As a council, we do not support either option one or two and respectfully suggest that there's a third option for you to consider. This is that instead of funding option two primarily through rates, that other funding tools are considered and utilized. In particular, we believe that loan funding should be used to develop the statutory plans, which have a lifespan of 10 years or more. We use this very approach for our second generation district plan as, in our opinion, the beneficiaries from this plan were not just today's ratepayers. Using the concept of intergenerational equity meant that these costly but important and necessary plans were distributed more fairly across our residents, both now and into the future. Number two, revenue and financing policy and the use of the UAGC. The second point we'd like to speak to relates to your draft revenue and financing policy, in particular, the use of or lack of use of the uniform annual general charge, the UAGC rating tool. I know we've presented to you in the past on this, but just to jog your memory, as a council, our revenue and financing policy enables us to utilise this as much as possible to more fairly and evenly distribute our people costs. And it is our council's view, that as a regional council, you should too. We disagree with the assumption in your current policy that properties with a higher capital value, CV, have an increased ability to afford higher rates. We disagree with that assumption. While council acknowledges that the general rate must be used in some cases, we don't believe it should be the default position. We note that your draft policy states that target rates are used to, in a quote, "ensure that the cost of an activity is borne by the group or groups deemed to derive most benefit from it or who contributed to the need for the activity." Counsel, unquote, council agrees with this statement, however, considers this principle has not been applied consistently. As you will see in our submission, we've highlighted areas in your draft policy where we, we request that you consider that funding approach. While our work as a district council is different to your role at a regional level, we do have areas of similarity also. The primary example being your activity of regional and strategy leadership and air community governance and decision making. For what we can see, these areas are comparable for. Context, comparable, for context, we fund our community governance and decision-making activity 100% from a UAGC as everyone, everyone benefits equally in the district from our engagement activities. Our corporate planning, including the long-term plans, annual plans, annual report development and their governance arrangements, which are the council, youth council, the Methfin community board, are targeted UAC. Other examples of where we fund an activity using the UAGC are our public toilets, our community safety, which is the CCTV and security, our Ashburton library, our Ashburton museum, our EA network centre, which has our stadium ampoule in it and emergency management. Therefore, we respectfully encourage you not to use the general rate as your default rating basis. Targeted rates and the UAGC are tools in your toolbox that you should utilise in the first instance for all people-focused activities. The general rate and targeted rates on the capital value should be your last resort. Hekio Heinz MAR project. We note that the Hekio Heinz MAR project has shown success in reducing nitrate and increasing groundwater supplies in the areas adjacent to the current sites. We support the inclusion of funding towards the Hekio Heinz MAR project in year one of the draft long-term plan 2021-22. We note that the corrected consultation document shows the rate impact is less than the original did. But as stated in our submission, we believe that there has been a missed opportunity to communicate clearly and directly with the affected property owners who are set to face a hefty increase from year two with the proposed project enhancements. who are set to face a hefty increase from year two with the proposed project enhancements. As we prepared our draft L T P over the past 12 months, it became evident to us that two agricultural water supplies, for clarity, these are both used for drinking water and stock water, that we operate, were going to fall under the new drinking water standards, meaning that the treatment requirement should be significantly more onerous than in the past. These supplies are currently funded by the properties connected, not as part of our drinking water club. This meant that properties would face a doubling of their water rates by year four of our L T P. We knew this was not going to be well received or pleasant news for those connected to these schemes. But in the interests of being open and transparent, we contacted each property owner to advise them of what was proposed at the beginning of our consultation. So they had a chance to talk to staff and subsequently make submissions with a number coming to speak to us at our hearings next week. I tell you this example as we believe that there's been a missed opportunity to speak directly to those who will pay for the most of the Heinz Hekio Maa project. As this is a year two project, we believe you can still remedy the situation and urge you to have the hard conversations with the community through next year's annual plan. Long-term plan consultation in general, my number four point. Our community was disappointed that there were no E C A D-led community meetings held in our district through your consultation process for the long-term plan. We appreciate that they can be resource-intensive, but without them, the community does not get the opportunity to have the conversations, to listen to your rationale and to ask the questions that are front of mind. We believe you missed an opportunity to get in front of what was no doubt a challenging long-term plan. The saying, nothing about us, without us, was front of mind for our consultation on our draft long-term plan. We didn't get it 100% perfect, but we did front up and connected with people in our community who may not have ever engaged with us before. In short, we strongly urge you to reconsider your engagement, engagement approach in the future. So thanks for the opportunity to speak here today. We wish you, and before we go on to that, I'll just transfer over to Liz, who's going to talk about the transport.
Thank you. And this is just, um, under 1.16 and 1.17 of our submission. And, um, just noting, um, the inclusion of $5,093 in the draft plan for our community vehicle trust. And just to thank you for that inclusion and, um, Ashburton District Council supports the continuation of that programme as well as the, um, total mobility funding of 34,742 in 2021-22. Thank you.
So thanks for the opportunity to speak with you here today. We wish you all the best as you head into, into the deliberation mode and the subsequent work to get to a successfully adopted long-term plan by the end of June. And we're more than happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Neil and Liz. And I do very much have your comments from our, your annual plan submission still in my head. So I'll over to Peter first and then Phil.
Oh, hi, thanks, uh, you know, thanks for coming. Liz, the community car process, is that well down the track? How are you going with that?
Thank you. Um, we decided to do a six-month trial. And we're about three and a half months into that. We started that mid-January. We've got a couple more months to go. We offered something a little bit different to the other community vehicle trusts in that we ran a scheduled service, um, from outlying districts into Ashburton for a couple of hours and then back again. We haven't had the response we thought, so we are now looking at maybe doing what the other vehicle trusts are doing and having a, um, a specific car available for, for trips, um, at any time of the week instead of a scheduled, um, service. So we're just looking at how that's working. We had funding from COGS. It wasn't an Ashburton District Council initiative. It came through our Safe Communities project, um, which I, and I chaired that group, so that's why I'm involved. But the response we've had has been, from the people who have used it, has been fantastic. And they are people who, um, elderly, live, um, don't drive and are coming into the district to connect with people. And that's exactly what we wanted to use it for, it's just giving that momentum going. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Liz, Phil.
Thank you for your submission. Just also on transport and particularly safe Ashburton, like, I just, um, the, the concept of transport on demand and my way, you'll know about from Timaru, being the sample. I just wondered, in fact, if, if your council at all might not be interested in looking at that as a possibility, a number of areas here.
No, we haven't looked at it. We advocate for the transport, we don't actually do it. We see it as environment canary's role to do that, so, uh, welcome to partner with you.
Very much, Ian.
Just, just a clarification, Neil, on your, uh, Liz, on your comments about using debt funding to fund development plans with a lifespan of at least 10 years. We, we have a slight dilemma in that we put in place plan changes two and five, which involved the Ashburton district with an expectation they would have a lifespan of greater than 10 years, but they didn't. They have to be redone because of the essential freshwater package. What would, uh, how, would, so would you consider, um, how, how would you deal with the risk of actually borrowing for 10? Oh, sorry. Barring for 10 years, but not getting 10 years out of plans.
The example we gave was our district plan, which was, um, has a life of 10 years. So we, we did the plan and we've loan funded it over 10 years. But we're up to plan change four, but the plan changes are not costing anywhere near the amount of dollars that the original plan costs. So, um, and I think the general rate has picked up the cost of those plans, but, uh, they also could be loan funded and rolled forward. I couldn't see a problem with that. Your plan changes as they go through? Yep.
Kiara, thank you very much, Neil and Liz, for coming up and speaking to your submission today. I would well now welcome Hamish Fairburn up to the table, please. And I believe he has a PowerPoint, thank you, Matt.
Kilda Koto, everybody, my name is Hamish Fairburn and I'm with Conservation Volunteers New Zealand. I'm the regional manager. I'm very grateful for this opportunity to come along and, um, talk to my submission. So thank you very much, I know that your time's very valuable. And I'd also like to say thank you very much for the funding that we have received thus far. And that has been through Fakarora Healthy Harbour and also funding to support the Arthur's Past Wildlife Trust. My request is for a continuation of this funding to support these important programmes. So who is Conservation Volunteers New Zealand? And what do we do? We are a community-focused charitable trust and we were established in 2006. We employ 80 people across five hubs, Auckland, Wellington, Puna Kaike, Christchurch and Dunedin. To date, we have planted 1.5 million trees and we've facilitated half a million hours of community engagement. And for our Christchurch office, we receive funding through RATA for local community engagement, Christchurch City Council. So this is our office here at Patterson House at Horstville Quarry, uh, through Environment Canterbury. And that was for the production of some Fakaropor weed videos and also through supporting the Arthur's Past Wildlife Trust from the Department of Conservation, of the community fund for planting 40,000 cacaetea at Maraho and Cranford Basin, and also through Fakarora Healthy Harbour for delivery days. So a lot of the work that we do is in, in Fakaropor and Littleton Harbour. And to date, we have delivered 71 days of, of mahi in the harbour. And so this has been with locals, corporates, local schools and our conservation work skills participants. We've supported the following groups with their conservation projects. Rapaaki, Diamond Harbour Littleton Reserves Committees, Cas Bay and Church Bay Residence Associations, Living Springs, Orton Bradley, Otumahur Ecological Quail Island Restoration Trust, the Banks Peninsula Conservation Trust at Port Saddle. And we've coordinated four harbour cleanups. So the kind of mahi or work that we've been doing has been tree planting, weeding, releasing trapping, track work, litter pickup, so practical conservation work. We also have a, uh, in collaboration with Nahe Feke and Living Springs, we have a kamahe for nature application, which is currently sitting with the Department of Conservation. And if successful with this application, the mahi that we do with, um, our Fakarora work will complement this, um, kamahe for nature work. So here we are at Stedfast Stream. So this is an example of, um, one of our volunteer days. And this is with Ekan staff, you might spot a few familiar faces there in that crowd. And this was last year where we coordinated, uh, four community planting days and with various corporates. And we carried out the site prep and we planted around about 2,000 trees, shrubs and grasses. And we're currently sort of maintaining these plants, um, in conjunction with the Cas Bay Residence Association. And this is to protect Tonga species, um, like the Galaxit that is found in the stream. And this is all about, um, reducing the sediment that flows into the harbour. So I briefly mentioned before our conservation work skills programme. If you're wondering what this is, so this is a, a national employment pathways programme developed by Conservation Volunteers New Zealand. And it's in partnership with the Ministry of Social Development. It builds practical and transferable skills within the conservation sector. It supports conservation projects and links graduates with industry jobs. And over the past three years, C V and Z has successfully employed and trained over 250 people. So the programme is three months long. Participants work for three days a week and they get skills, qualifications, work experience, pastoral care. And they also get a free lunch, which is a bit of a bonus. So this photo here, this was taken at Rapaaki at the end of last year, where we were doing some work with Isaac, doing a little bit of blackberry control and also doing some planting. So we also support the Arthur's Past Wildlife Trust. So we're very grateful for the funding there as well, thank you. On this particular day, we were carrying traps, we had about 50 people there. A few people were sort of hiding, um, in this photo. And we were carrying traps up the Waimekaere River Valley to the Crow Valley. And we've also had trap carrying days up the Munga and Edwards Valleys. And this is supporting the Forever Theo Project. We've also helped to coordinate Weed Blitz Weekends. This is in partnership with Mbaro Hub, the Department of Conservation, Forest and Bird North Canterbury and Eco, where we are targeting, uh, Russell lupins and brier primarily around the Klondike Corner in Bealee River Valley areas. So this, as you can imagine, takes quite a lot to coordinate. And we have volunteers that come up from Christchurch in the West Coast for the weekend. And we also have our work skills teams that head up to Arthur's Past to help them spraying the lupins as well. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I hope Ekan will continue to provide us with funding that enables us to support a variety of groups with their conservation projects. I'm very grateful for your time, thank you.
Kiara, thank you very much for your presentation, Hamish. We've got a question from Peter and Lynne, and that will be it.
Good, thank you and, and well done on all the work that you're doing. It's good to see all those combined units getting to work. I'm just interested actually in the traps, how do you manage the traps? Once you've got all the traps out there, are they, how do you do the, you know, the maintenance on them in terms of resets and stuff?
Uh, I suppose you pass it and say.
Oh, yeah.
Reactivate it, thank you. I know that the Arthur's Past Wildlife Trust, they work with a variety of different groups that go, that go up there and they manage the various trap lines. Also, a lot of the, the residents of Arthur's Past, they also manage those trap lines. And they get willing volunteers that come up from Christchurch. So I was up there not so long ago and I carried some traps up at Lunch Peak. So they get, you know, gullible people like me that come along and help out.
Thanks so much for your, um, submission, Hamish. And yeah, congratulations on the work across a whole bunch of projects. My question was just around, um, the funding for Arthur's Past Wildlife Trust. Just because sometimes if we don't have dollars attached to these things, um, they get lost. How much was Ekan funding? And then also for the Fakaropor aspect of it, are you saying that that funding was through Ekan funding Fakaropor and then they have contracted Conservation Volunteers to undertake a portion of that work? Is that right?
So with Arthur's Past, uh, supporting the Arthur's Past Wildlife Trust, we received $5,000 from Ekan and that was for six delivery days or project days. And that was, you know, carrying traps and also organising, which there are two or three days. And then there was the, the Weed Blitz Weekend that we organised and also, um, our team of work skills, people going up there. With Fakaropor, so that money came through Fakarora Healthy Harbour. Yeah. So I've been working with Karen Danwell on it. Yep.
Well, thank you very much for your time today, Hamish. We really appreciate you taking the opportunity to come and speak to your submission. Fraser, I just want to acknowledge you online, we have Carrie Barnett coming up to present to us now and you're after her. So thank you very much, Hamish, and we welcome Carrie and Koto to the table.
I will note, uh, more than an interest this time.
Kilda Koto, greetings everyone and thank you for the opportunity to present our submission today. I'm Carrie Barnett, I'm representing Elsmer Sustainable Agriculture Incorporated. I'm the environmental advisor and also a family farmer. With us today, we have Jo German-Vinnie, she's also a family farmer and our group's publicity officer and does an amazing job with our newsletter and publications. And also Craig Croft, another family farmer, he's also our communications manager and in his spare time, he's the assistant principal Shirley Boys High. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And we have a short statement to present and are happy to answer questions afterwards. For those of you who don't know who we are, the group represents 112 farmers, mainly intergenerational family farmers between the Salwen and Rakaya rivers, state highway one to the west and the east coast. The group had its beginnings in Southbridge in the late 90s and has gone from strength to strength. Its ethos represents exactly what its title suggests, and that is sustainable and environmentally ethical farming. At the same time, we advocate for Elsmer farmers predominantly at the local and regional level, although we are increasingly having our voice heard at the national scale as well. Above all in this activity, we have learnt that on-the-ground actions have the most benefit for all as opposed to further regulation. Our latest work has culminated in the Ministry for Primary Industries granting us $2.5 million in a Jobs for Nature scheme called the Tanaku Germinate Growth Project. The funding is to undertake riparian restoration along the lowland waterways, do baseline surface water monitoring and the creation of an environmental database for our area. It is a non-regulatory project that will involve not only our farmers, but close connections with the Salwen District Council, Ekan, Ti Tamaru Runanga, local schools and the community. This project will benefit all of Salwen District and the Canterbury region. That's just our background. As far as our submission goes, um, we're similar to the previous submitter in Ashburton District Council in that we don't support option one or two in terms of the significant increase of the proposed rates. They simply are unaffordable for our farmers. So to illustrate what this means to a characteristic Elsmer farm, we offer the following example. You may remember 18 months ago, many of you visited a family farming mixed crop in Sheik. sheep operation in Lakeside as part of your council induction trip. The property is over 274 hectares and currently pays in rates a combined total of $18,500 per annum. $5,230 is the regional council's rates component. Like the majority of Elsmer farms, it is not located where flood protection works are required and there is no council operated drainage system, water race system, reticulated water or sewage disposal. And the farm also operates under a 15 kg per hectare end level. Survival here is very much user pays orientated. On top of our high rates payments, we also have to pay for our own day to day servicing requirements, repair and upgrade. Over the next 10 years, the ECAN rates amount is proposed to rise to over $9,000 under option one at this property. This will be in addition to the 50% proposed rates increase planned by the Salwen District Council for the same period. So by 2031, this property would attract a yearly rates demand of approximately $30,000 per annum. This is not sustainable for this property. This is especially the case when keeping in mind that there has not been exponential increases in income from farm produce over the last 10 years. Income from farm produce has been static for that period and for some produce prices have actually declined. Trimming of the annual farm budget will now occur, just the same way as long term planned budgets get trimmed. Some things stay, some things go. Investing in new items, methods to try and achieve farm environment A grade may simply not be achievable and yet that is exactly what we are all trying to achieve. So what's the answer? We've submitted and said we've got four main points. Firstly, raise the amount payable via uniform annual general rates charge to ensure all property owners pay more for the region wide matters we all contribute to, similar to what Ashburton Council said in AG the freshwater strategies and plans. Secondly, we request more government funding for rewriting freshwater policy and strategy. There seems to be an underlying current that farmers are solely responsible for water quality issues and therefore will pay for it. Bird development is also responsible and contributes significantly to water quality degradation. Thirdly, lobby the government further based on the feedback on this LTP process regarding the impact that unachievable timeframes create. And fourthly, borrow monies for operating expenditure to offset high initial rate increases in conjunction with a fairer rates charge threat. That's the negative part, I guess, of our submission, but the positives are that the Salwen Waihura Zone was the first off the rank for the application of the zone specific regional land and water provisions. In this zone, there have been several initiatives that we fully support and must have going forward. They are firstly, the regional zone teams. That has been massive for our particular area and an ongoing good relationship with Environment Canterbury. Secondly, the immediate steps programme that helps fund our lowland restoration programme. We can't thank Environment Canterbury enough for continuing on with those programmes. Thirdly, the bang for buck consultation programmes, talking to those that really know regularly and undertaking combined problem solving. We see that as key to further progress in our area. Fourthly, the implementation of the initiative, the cultural land management advisors, we've found that really, really helpful as well. And fifthly, the whakauhangar kōrero meetings that have just been started. These are the key areas we cannot afford financially, physically, emotionally or culturally to do without. Our group cannot express strongly enough the importance and success of non-regulatory activity and proactive consultation in supporting and improving environmental and farming outcomes. Thank you for your time and we're happy to answer any questions.
Kiara, thank you very much for your submission and apologies for mispronouncing your name, Carrie. Does anyone have any questions here? Phil.
Thank you for your submission today. And one of the things that I guess is behind all this is the fast increase in costs for all local councils, including us. One of the things you write too though, is that you oppose a system based on the value of a property and you refer quite strongly to increasing universal annual general charge. So I just wondered, are there any other systems of rating which in fact you might have supported, which you haven't actually mentioned?
No, I'm just kidding. I'm very well aware of rating systems and can remember in previous employment at Salwen District Council, it was often a discussion about surely there must be a fairer way to charge rates because it's more about a service than a property value, to be honest. So we're still here arguing the same point, I guess. So we, I'm sorry, don't have any magical option, but other than to use the uniform charging rate system as best that can to try and spread the charges across.
Thank you very much for your response, Carrie. Ian.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie, for a very thoughtful submission. In your point 1.5 in your written submission, you talk about property value rating may force farm system change from environmentally light impact systems to more detrimental systems. Could you just elaborate on that?
Yes, so one of the key things that we see as potentially an outcome for farmers is that, like we were saying about having to trim budgets, if we're having to pay more in our rates, that means that we won't, for instance, be able to fence off that waterway or we won't be able to plant over here or we won't be able to find a better way of locating our offal pit because it costs more to go in a different direction. So essentially, that is what it comes down to, is that all the good things that we want to do costs money. But if we're putting it into this bigger pole that we perhaps don't see as bigger benefit from, then we're struggling again to try and implement those new changes that we need to do.
Kiara, thank you very much, Carrie, and Jo and Craig for coming and presenting to your submission today. It was great to have. Oh, I'm open. Great to have you and great to hear from you. We now welcome Fraser McKenzie, who's joining us online. Thank you so much for hanging in there with us, Fraser. And feel free to kick off when you're ready, when you've unmuted your microphone. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to present our submission this afternoon. My name's Fraser McKenzie. I am the independent chair for the Waitaki Irrigators Collective. The Waitaki Irrigators Collective was formed in 2010. In particular to deal with a number of issues that irrigation schemes and irrigators in the Waitaki region were facing at the time. So we represent, our membership is about 85,000 hectares of irrigated land that runs between the La Waitaki Dam and the sea and covers both sides of the river, both the Otago or the North Otago side and the South Canterbury. And so that's a, it's a significant team and we are called a collective. And it's, has worked well to date. So representing that are the Kūra Duntrun Irrigation Company, the North Otago Irrigation Company, Moreton Glenavy Ikawai Irrigation Company, the Marifanua District Water Resource Company, La Waitaki Irrigation Company and a society of independent irrigators called Waitaki Independent Irrigators Incorporated. So the vast majority of our WIC members have watered take consents within the Environment Canterbury region. And the two large schemes on the South Bank, North Otago Irrigation Company and La Waitaki, they also have consent through the Otago Regional Council. So what we were, a summary, I suppose, of our submission is very much based around the fact that the La Waitaki River is a braided river, but unlike many other braided rivers in the, in the Environment Canterbury region, it is influenced by the Waitaki hydro schemes. So we have had some incidents or some events that have occurred late 2019 into 2020 that have highlighted some issues around the management of the fairway and how that has been impacted, partly due to the fact that our river is different, it's unique, due to the flows that come via the hydro systems. So while there were floods in 2019 in the Rangata, for example, a lot of damage was done through that river. While we didn't have the very high flows, we had very long term consistently higher than normal flows that caused a reasonable amount of damage. And we can see that through our submission. We included in there a couple of farm examples on the north bank of the river, the Van Cluster Farming Operation and Fettikin Station, as to what damage occurred as a result of that. So that has tended to highlight some issues around management of the fairway and the river itself. And so when we look at the summary of our submission, we're looking at, first of all, we were submitting on the fact that there needs to be greater alignment between services relating to the braided river character enhancement and those relating to river scheme infrastructure and management. We want a greater priority and increased funding from the general rate to address the significant issues relating to the fairway management. So we're saying there, there is a very, there's a focused rate or a rate around river users. And then also the wider general rate for those that are not necessarily physically bordering the river. We also ask that Environment Canterbury contribute funding to allow Waitaki physical works to reduce the burden to the local community as damage has been caused in part by long term management issues beyond that immediate flood damage. And we're also looking for a change to river rating calculation for the La Waitaki to increase transparency by which the funding is split and recognise the wider community benefit of the scheme and therefore whether that funding, some of that funding for the river management should be spread across a general rate and for works and services required. And the other one is, we're talking about is a clear pathway for undertaking planning in relation to the Waitaki catchment. So if we just look at a couple of those things there, we're saying the long term plan does not necessarily provide adequate funding or work planning to maintain and protect the healthy functioning of the La Waitaki River or protect land and infrastructure adjacent to the river. I just, we're saying that the, there is a requirement or a need for more active management. So as I said earlier, the La Waitaki catchment is unique amongst Canterbury and Otago rivers. And we submit that the factors have exasperated the issues that are being experienced by adjacent property owners. And this means that the La Waitaki requires more active management and, and starting as soon as possible. The other one was prioritising the Waitaki River. So when we look at, there was in the plan, the draft plan level, service 26 states that Environment Canterbury will maintain flood protection and drainage infrastructure to agreed standards. WIC submits that work on the river strategy should be accelerated, so from the dates that are being indicated in the draft plan. The draft plan also sets out the need to critically review each of the major river schemes. And table 8.5 sets out the schedule of these or the schedule of how the rivers that have been prioritised. And we are a little bit disappointed that the La Waitaki is considered to be of the second lowest priority on that table. And the other one was, obviously there's work being done around a braided river revival programme. And we're very pleased that funding has been allocated in the long term plan to braided river revival programmes. But we're just a little bit concerned as to the lack of specifics of what these programmes will be targeted and how they'll be targeted. And we're also concerned there are no timeframes for addressing some planning issues broadly beyond those required to implement the National Policy Statement for Freshwater Management. So a significant part of, in relation to irrigators, is the somewhat unique Waitaki catchment water allocation regional plan, which effectively came out of the project Aqua consenting or consent application back in the early 2000s. That, we're just concerned that at this stage, there isn't any indication that where that planning will fit within the long term plan. Under the current plan, the wording states that work with the zone committees to lead a community process to collaboratively establish environmental limits for water quality and water quantity in Canterbury. So that's an existing plan. We're just seeing there isn't a lot of detail around when we might see the Waitaki catchment allocation regional plan be reviewed, especially given that some of those items in the plan haven't been reviewed since the plan came in place in 2005. So again, we were submitting that the long term plan should provide details as to when these planning processes will take place, as the outcomes of these processes will have significant impact on many consent holders and consent from yours. So yeah, I think it's just probably just looking for a little bit more detail and some specifics in the plan. And I suppose finally, with, with some of the braided river proposals that are going forward, I understand there is looking at a plan being implemented or commencing with the Department of Conservation, potentially July 2021. In those planning processes, we are certainly very interested in participating in those given the, the value of the river to our members, not just from a commercial point of view, but certainly it's where we live. And so we'd certainly want to, would like to see that process beginning when DOC wants to start it in July 2021 as opposed to where ECAN may be looking at that four, five, six years after that date. So thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kiara, thank you very much for that, Fraser. And we'll have a question from Peter Scott.
Hi Fraser, Peter Scott, South Canterbury councillor. Fraser, just, there's, there's a lot of that submission that you've given us applies directly to ECAN, but in terms of river management and there's an ORC component in there and we manage on behalf of ORC, I was just wondering if you shared those concerns with ORC? I know this is our LTP, but yeah.
So we are, sorry, as we speak, we are preparing a submission to the Otago Regional Council's long term plan, which closes on this Sunday. And we are raising very similar issues with, with Otago Regional Council. So we are very well aware that they are a significant player in this as well.
Kiara, that's great to hear. Thank you so much for that, Fraser, and thank you so much for your time this afternoon. It's great to have you joining us online. We move now to the UCSA Kim Fowler will be presenting, followed by the youth thorpu. Welcome, Kim and friends.
Kato, it's so lovely to be here today and thank you for taking the time to hear us. My name is Kim Fowler, the president of the UCSA, the University of Canterbury Students Association. And I'm joined here by Asha and by Leo. We're all elective representatives of the 16,000 students at UC. We're here today to sort of aspirationally ask for free buses whilst acknowledging that at the moment, there is no public transport discount for students in Canterbury. How this is going to work is Asha's going to speak a little bit to why we think free buses specifically are important. Leo's going to go through some of the stats that we gathered whilst consulting with students. And then I'll wrap things up towards the end of our oral submission.
Kiara, everyone, I'm Asha, as Kim said.
Kyura, everyone. I'm Asher, as Kim said. So some of the main reasons why we think that and why students have indicated to us why free buses would be a good idea is of course the obvious one of using more buses. At the moment, only 9% of students indicated that they take the bus to uni and that would probably be a similar stat, thinking around their travel across Canterbury in general. So obviously increased bus use is a benefit for students as well as for the community and for ECAN altogether. We often, there's often sort of complaints around the community about parking issues around the university and that's because students recognise that it's actually cheaper in a lot of ways to drive to uni than it is to take the bus. Earlier today, I was speaking with a student who said that it's actually cheaper for her to drive her car. She fills up once a month than it is to bus and she lives about less than five minutes away from university drive. So that's a pretty obvious one is that using more buses is good for everyone involved. Additionally, there's also the benefit of, sorry. Yeah, so sorry, sorry.
I think the narrative of the bus being more expensive than a car is a really common one. And actually, our submission was catalyzed by a student reaching out and saying, wow, I've had this friend who just came from overseas who started to drive to uni and they were appalled to find the bus was more expensive than the past. Did you want to speak a little bit about the situation in Massey and how they pay benefits from free buses?
Yeah, so I'm sure as all of you know, in 2005, Massey University introduced a free bus scheme at their university in Palmerston North. And between 2005 and 2010, each year they saw a 5% increase of bus use across the community. We definitely feel that that's a possibility of the University of Canterbury's community. We think that it's been indicated in our surveys, which Leo will speak to, that students, if there's a discount, would be far more likely to use the bus. So there's no reason to think that that wouldn't be the case in Canterbury and Christchurch with our students. We think that, you know, making a free bus or even some kind of discount could, would put us on the same level as all other tertiary institutes across New Zealand. And we personally don't really see a reason why we couldn't do that. Obviously, we are more than willing to work with ECAN and the university in pushing this project through because it is really meaningful to us and it would make a huge difference financially for many students across the community. Do you want to speak to some of that?
Yes, thank you. Out of over 600 response, over two-thirds, 87% of students support free public buses. Eighty-four percent, eighty-four point two percent of those are what if the buses were free, would use it instead of driving. We believe that it consisted with ECAN's goal of reducing environmental impact if the buses were free. In accordance to parking, a majority, 62%, 62% that which parks around campus on the streets. This is, like Asher said, very disruptive to the community. We receive many complaints about that only 24.1% parks at uni. This is due to the high parking costs at uni.
I think that the reason that we bring up the parking is at UC community forums, we continually hear from the residents associations that they're frustrated by UC students parking outside their houses. And I know that you might assume the residents associations and the students associations may not have similar interests, but we think that it's a consideration in how free buses might benefit the community as a whole. I think it's important to speak about how students, most of us, live on around $230 a week plus the cost of a part-time job. When rent in Islay is around $145 plus power and internet, you're not left with much on which to live on. And so current public transport costs, although they may seem low when you look at the cost of one trip, if those are adding up over a week, then that can become really significant. And many students live further away than walking distance from university. In our long-form answers that we received from students, we heard from students who had conditions like chronic pain, who physically couldn't walk to uni even if they were close enough. And they said that they were in a position where they couldn't drive sometimes, say if you were on medication and to manage your pain and so had to take the bus and incur that cost, which would be more expensive than driving. Another theme in our answers is that students at UC study things like public transport and managing these, and they were frustrated that the themes of the things which they were studying and the reality which they lived in in the city didn't match up. And so I guess we are also urging you to listen to our experts who suggest initiatives such as these. I mean, you've read what we've written, but you know, this is important to us and it's something we've had really positive feedback from our student community from in making the submission. So we urge you to consider it and are very happy to take any questions.
Kyura, thank you, Leo, Kim and Asher. I have a question, then we'll go to Peter and then Craig, then Phil, and that will be it. So you've said that Massey has been, has had the free buses since 2005. Do you know if that is funded by the council or by the university? Do you know? You can say no. And just take your button again to get the mic back.
So that it's partially funded by the university and partially funded by, I believe, the combination of the city council and the
Regional Council.
The Regional Council, yeah.
I think it's more council-funded than university-funded.
Thanks for coming in and giving us your information. It's really, really quite helpful to have you here in person to do that. My question is about the free bus thing. In terms of with that, would you use it across the whole network rather than just getting out to uni and back? Would you use it during the week to go other places? I mean, is it a free bus service just to uni or the whole week?
Thank you. I think we can be really aspirational and look at how students can contribute to our Canterbury community as a whole. And so I guess free buses across the network will really benefit that because we have students who come here from across the country. And for many students, they don't drive, especially first years. And so in terms of they paid that $2.30 a week from the government, most of them have jobs. And so I'd imagine that the cost of the transport associated with their jobs is significant as well.
Also to add to there, a lot of social events in the city, I believe it will benefit especially to the creative community if buses were free as more people will come to the city.
Kyura Koto, na me kia koto, mokoto koeiwa, tina kena. So thanks for your wonderful submission and thanks for the data and the work you've done on the survey. I just had a question, similar to Nicole actually, and I take it that we do have responsibility or the responsibility for public transport, so not divulging from that. But I did wonder if you had sought support from the University of the University Council for the provision of sort of more collaborative or more innovative approach to public transport and buses for university students that we could work with as well.
We haven't had that conversation yet, but I think it's one that we very much could be having. It would be an accessible conversation for us to have. So I consider that as a possibility going forward.
Thank you very much for your submission. And we understand especially about the costs for students. There was a submission earlier today where a student said, a definition of a student would be by age, would be all students. And but what that was about was really about a subsidised fair, equivalent to a child fair. And we are doing a review of our fair costs. What I wanted to ask you about too is especially say for free buses for the community as a whole. I just wondered if when you did your survey, if you looked at any other studies within, besides the university you referred to at Massey? If you looked at any other, any cities throughout the world, say, where the council had brought in free buses and they had been run successfully?
We were reasonably pressed for time whilst putting the submission together. And that would have been a great consideration, but unfortunately we weren't able to.
Kyura, thanks again, Leo, Kim and Asher for coming in this afternoon. We really appreciate you taking the time. And we'll be taking your feedback and your written submission into consideration on our deliberations. We now welcome the Youth Throku up to the table.
Tena koto, katoa. I'm Oscar Bloom, Chairperson of the ECAN Youth Throku. And today, speaking to our submission, we have Ruby Go Clifford, Will Gray and our Deputy Chairperson Jasmine Hora Swain. First of all, thank you very much for letting us speak. It's always a great opportunity to have this forum and to have other floor in this space. So to start off with, Jasmine is going to hand out some sheets we have to go along with our submission and just break down what our key points for today are and what we kind of want to get through most in this sort of time. We have three main overarching messages to cover today. The first one is about the need for transformational education. The second is about nurturing our natural environment. And the third is creating a public transport network fit for the long term. We have immense pride in this work. It's been a real labour of love for us. We've really reached out to all the networks we've possibly got and it develops networks to gain this feedback. So it's been a really big project that we've taken on. We're really proud of what's in this submission. I'll hand over to Will.
Yeah, thanks. So Kyura, I'm Will. A couple of things I just want to run you through today. First of all, sort of our overall engagement process. And then second of all, that first key theme around that first key takeaway about the need for transformational education. So a bit of background on what we did. We reached out to about 71 young people by going and basically running facilitation systems with 13 youth councils and environment groups. So we had a roughly 50/50 split on groups from Canterbury and groups from, sorry, groups from Christchurch and then groups from across Waiheke, Canterbury. Obviously, like a 200-page long-term plan isn't particularly conducive to like being able to, I guess, easily run like a consultation session with young people when you've got 30 or 40 minutes. So sort of our strategy to, I guess, dealing with this was we sort of took the key issues which we thought would be relevant to youth and we looked at the things which were in option one, but weren't option two. And we basically asked, do you think that we should keep these in? Is it worth the relative cost like to rate payers, et cetera? So yeah, obviously, as I sort of mentioned, we developed a 40-minute programme. So we gave a lot of education about ECAN rates, LTP, et cetera, before then running them through sort of some of the key programmes that fell into those categories. And then they answered some survey questions which we then combined into form this report. And I do sort of want to touch on that about half of our session was education. And I think that leads really nicely into that first point about the need for transformational education. So yeah, before doing anything else, before running through anything, any sort of major introduction, we basically asked them like what they knew about Environment Canterbury. And the response to that was not great. So what we sort of generally saw was that a lot of those answers to that question were vague. They were confused about local council responsibilities. A lot of them just repeated things which had already been said in the workshop. And what's I think particularly alarming about this is that this is from a very informed group of young people. So they're people who care about the environment. We're talking about school environment groups and youth councils. About 30% of them also, oh no, only about 30%, of them indicated that they felt heard when it came to environmental, I guess, issues and decision-making by like forms of government. And so I think it is, I think in a sense alarming that, you know, that that was only a very small number of young people who had that positive interaction. And likewise with this, we also asked them about a couple of other issues. We asked them about what they thought a rate payer was and the discussion was, I guess, that responses were more of the same. It was, you know, they were confused and there was not necessarily a lot of recognition that you're a rate payer. If you rented, for example, and we also asked them about knowledge on sort of mammoth in a way and Itagah stories. And there was very, very sort of poor response to that as well. I think like a couple of key takeaways from this is that first of all, is that like young people like really care about the environment. It's the issue of regeneration. And like if they're missing out and they don't feel like, like they're engaged with government, like I think that that doesn't bode very well for these people feeling like listened to and engaging with, you know, their like regional decision maker for these sort of areas. And so we think that actually there's a real opportunity there to, you know, get these people on board. And like that segues into what I guess we sort of feel is the main benefit from this is like having informed rate payers in the future, right? Like you've got a real opportunity to get young people who care about it now to sort of have them educated about Environment Canterbury. And then that means that when they come through to be paying rates, they're more supportive of perhaps the work that Environment Canterbury wants to do. They're more inclined to, you know, submit and actually get involved in these processes. So sort of I guess a couple of key programmes that we'd like to see supported from that is for the support of youth engagement and also the development of the civics education resource for schools. I think Jasmine's going to talk us through next.
Is the mic close enough?
Try and swap sex.
So at the end of the day, we did ask the young people if their preference was for option one over option two. 77.5% of our respondents preferred option one and 22.5% preferred option two. So there was still diversity within the youth voice. Of that, 58 respondents agreed or strongly agreed that their preferred option would help to ensure that Canterbury is prepared for the future beyond the next 10 years. Rudy is now going to cover the key areas that almost all young people agreed on through our survey.
So the following areas that I'm going to talk about, we found that the majority of youth stated that these were either moderately important all the way up to very important. And like Will mentioned before, basically we told them about the programmes. These are the programmes that were mentioned in the LTP consultation document. We told them what they're about and the fact that they were in option one, but not necessarily option two. And also how much it would cost to keep them in the plan. So I'm sort of going with the same trend as in your submission. So first up for under the leading our community section, people really found that youth engagement, investing for the future, data for decision-making, environmental skills, civics education programme for schools and a contestable fund for community projects were really important to them. In the second section, under public transport, the things that were really key were student discount, onboard experience, electric buses, regional connections. And we found that 95.8% of respondents feel it is important for Environment Canterbury to invest in public transport in the next 10 years. Next up is water and land. So under that, the key areas were braided river revival, regenerative native planting, wetland protection, pest management, support for landowners to help them comply with new regulations and the managed aquifer recharge systems for Waiteha. And lastly, under climate change and community resilience, the key areas were managing the coastal environment and civil defence activities in the wake of an increasingly uncertain future in the face of climate change. And again, these were areas that youth felt it was important to invest funding in specifically. I'll now hand back to Oscar.
Awesome. So just to reiterate the three points that we really zeroed in on today. One, the need for transformational education. Two, nurturing our natural environment. And three, creating a public transport fit for the long term. This has been a considerable body of work and it really in our eyes examines what the generation of tomorrow, the generation that we would say most environmental issues kind of prepares for are going to be experiencing and what they believe in as like it's a long-term plan, this is a 10-year period. By the time, by the end of this plan, you know, we're all going to be fully adults in the workforce more. And I think it's also really profound what we started about how this submission with a pretty much 50/50 split of inner-city Christchurch groups and Waiheke, Canterbury. And so it actually shows that in a lot of the data that we're getting, we're seeing a diversity of young people. And that's also what's so valuable, valuable about what's in here. It's a diverse range of voice that you can get from, you know, 13 different youth councils and 72 respondents. So we're pretty proud of that actually. And yeah, we'll hand it back to you. Questions?
Kyura, thanks very much, team, for your very Kyura, thanks very much team for your very extensive submission. I'll go to Anne McKenzie first, please.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for all your hard work in preparing your submission. In leadership, you talked about support for Enviro Schools. My question is, is that something, do you have a view as to whether that's something that should be funded by the Ministry for Education or by the rate payers in Canterbury?
We haven't looked specifically into, or with the submission, basically, we're trying to show what a general youth voice is, the voices of the members of the youth Ropu aren't necessarily the ones represented within here. So we can't necessarily speak on behalf of what everybody else that has put their feedback in would believe in, and we haven't looked into that at all. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you so much for this work. It's an authentic submission. My question was just about the option one and option two difference. And you, you know, you've, you've sort of included a lot of commentary that came out of your feedback from the young people that you sampled. Within the youth Ropu yourself, did you, like, are you, are you in these tables? Or, I mean, do you have a view yourselves as to option one or option two? I'm just interested.
We didn't include our own feedback in the submission because our goal at the end of the day was to represent more young people than ourselves. Though we did, some of us actually write in our own submissions by email. So not necessarily all Ropu members did that, but if you're looking specifically for Ropu based opinions, that would be the place to find them.
Kyura, well, thanks very much team for your submission and for coming in to present to us today. It was great to have you in again. We move now to Aoraki Environmental. Trina Davidson, please.
Tienakotakatoa, I'm Trina Davidson. I'm here representing Aoraki Environmental Consultancy, but more importantly, Tiduranga o Arofinoa. And firstly, I put in my apologies for our actual cultural consultants of Aoraki Environmental Consultancy. They couldn't make it here today, so you've got me. I won't go through the submission in detail. I prepared a sort of answer questions. I guess the one thing I would say about the submission that's made over all is it's about building, reviewing and building on, I guess, the relationships that Arofinoa has to date. And I guess pushing that further, but also I guess taking the environmental wins that they've currently got banking them and again building upon those. So yeah, aside from that, I'm just happy to answer questions.
Kyura, that's very succinct. I will go Peter Vidalan.
Thanks for coming in and being willing to take questions, which is great. Your capacity building, are you getting on with that at Aoraki? I mean, you, you tend to be severely under stress in terms of what you need to do and how many people you've got to do it. So how's that going?
So currently, Aoraki Environmental Consultancy has four cultural consultants. They have other jobs as well as the job that they're doing. And then there's two, I guess, planners within the team, myself and Kylie. So yes, we are stretched. I think it's fair to say that we are building some good relationships though with councils, with the community groups, with irrigation companies and things, but it is stretched. And I suppose part of the query about asking for more from Runa is actually then having the capacity to deliver on that. It's not you saying we'd like to be involved in a whole lot of things and then actually not being able to provide that. So we're well aware of that when we go into things that, yeah.
Supplementary, supplementary leading question. What is, but when, when you talk about that and the part-time people that you have, with the fact that if they were full-time, would that give you more, would that give you the capacity?
It would definitely assist in the capacity. I think Arofinoa has dreams of kind of a very large, very functional team able to do a whole lot of different things, including online farm auditing, mataring amati, research and things like that. So there's aspirations of a much larger team over time.
Kyura, Trina, thanks for your submission. I really just wanted to pick up on, and I'm sorry, I can't recall where exactly it is in your submission, but it's just in my notes. We talk about an over-onerous consent application to undertake weed removal work to restore a wetland in the Opahe. And I was wondering if you wanted to, for mahinga kite purposes, I should add, expand a bit on that. Is it a process that is finished and we can, like, could you tell us the costs, for example? Because we've had a similar submission who was concerned about consents for environmental purposes.
So this one was a, one with Department of Conservation. I think they've lodged it. I guess what we found, so Kylie and I were actually asked to do the work and prepare the resource consent. I guess we found it a little bit ironic that it was actually harder to care weeds in a wetland than it is to do most farming activities. So it, it fell in the, I guess, some of the archaic provisions in the plan and some of the terminology around the words material and things, which just meant it actually went to non-complying to actually get a consent. So Environment Canterbury is working with the Department of Conservation on this to make it as smooth a path as possible. But I guess it's just one of those things that I suppose for us, made us quite pleased to see that the regional coastal plan is actually being included in the 10 year review.
Kyura, Liz.
I noticed here in your submission, under the role of the water zone committees, that there's a query about the relationship between zone committee processes going forward. So is, is what you want here as a meeting, a discussion or debate about the role of the zone committees? I mean, what, what's specifically, does Arofinoa want us to review the zone committee? Can you just be a bit more specific?
I think, again, it's probably for the Runa to say, but my experience is that there is some frustration that the Runa has, Runanga have with the zone committee and the zone committee processes. And I suppose what they'd like to see over time is just, I guess, how the zone committees are used and feed into the freshwater management unit processes that are coming. Yeah, but over time, I guess it is a question about just the zone committees and in particular the role of the Runanga on those zone committees. Versus, I guess, a working in partnership with Environment Canterbury.
Grant will be our last question, unless you do.
Thank you. I was wondering if you're able to just clarify your concerns about managed aquifer recharge projects. What are your main concerns on that?
So Runanga went into managed aquifer recharge with the view that it would be a trial process. There are considerable concerns about mixing of water, for example, that have come out of it. You're taking pristine mountain water, you're putting it into an aquifer that generally may not actually again be from the mountains. There's issues about, I guess, that replacing some of the good management practice. One of the more frustrating conversations Runanga have been having is that the managed aquifer recharge will potentially offset some of the work that farmers may have to do. Where for Runanga, they've always seen it as, I guess, the icing on the cake. It's not the solution, it's part of, and it's to do that final bit, not a large chunk of. And that's what they're hearing more and more. And so when you've got more things like applications coming in, actually asking for more water to be taken, when a trial hasn't really been completed and nothing's really conclusive, the Runanga are a bit frustrated. So I suppose what they're asking for here is, like a lot of this submission, is just, I guess, seeing the role of Arofinoa, Runanga in these conversations and actually taking them along with them. Because at the moment, we're responding more to things like the resource consents or to the applicants and getting involved in very litigious processes rather than actually being involved in discussions with ECAN and the, and the groups that I suppose are a more meaningful level.
Kyura, well, thank you very much, Trina, for coming up and presenting to us today. It's been great to have you in the room. And I really, I think I speak on behalf of council. I appreciate your focusing on giving us opportunities to ask questions. So thank you for that. I now invite Marie Graebe back to the table. And apologies, Marie, we didn't realise you were going to be here as part of the Banks Peninsula team and then here again later. We would have had you present both at the same time had we been aware. But it's great that we can have you in with your kids here too, and they can be part of our democratic processes. So welcome back to the table and away to you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm here now on behalf of myself and my partner. And I've got my two boys here, Alex and Matthew. So I'm here to say that I support option one. So for me, as a rate payer living on Wegrum, the difference between option one and option two is $33 a year. I'm more than prepared to pay that. And in fact, I'm prepared to pay a lot more than that. Because I think that the crisis, we are facing crises around climate change, around biodiversity loss. And in order to give my children a stable climate, I'm, I'm happy to pay for that. Our past decisions have caught up with us and we, the adults of today, have to be prepared to pay to fix the mistakes of the past. So I have three areas I want to make comments on. The first is around fresh water. It actually really upsets me that there are very few places that I can take my children to swim anywhere near Christchurch in freshwater lakes and rivers. It's actually a crying shame that there's probably three places. And even gathering kaimuana, it's dodgy. Everywhere close is dodgy. And that, that, that is a failure on us for our children. And so I'm excited to see these new freshwater regulations. But actually, I want to see them go far, far further than that. My second comment's around biodiversity and biosecurity. And I support really meaningful change in this area. Extension of Meurururako, additional funding for pest control, pest-free Banks Peninsula, the contestable farm for community environment projects, environment to education, expansion of Enviro Schools, wetland restoration and protection of our braided rivers. And, you know, I work in conservation, but I'm really passionate about habitat restoration and pollution control. These are the keys to bringing back our native birds, lizards and invertebrates to the city. The last area I want to make a comment on is transport. So transport is a huge part of our missions in Christchurch. And it is going to be one of the hardest areas to tackle because we are a car culture and we like driving around in our cars. It's convenient. It's, it's easy. So we as a family have made a commitment to reducing our household emissions and it is not easy. And the bus service needs to be way better. These kids get on the bus at 7:40 in the morning to get to school at 8:40. And the reason they do that is because the next bus doesn't get them to school until 8:45 and they'll be late for school. And so what we need to say is that actually a step change in public transport. The bus, the buses actually need to be, they need to be regular, like at least 15 minutes. They need to be free and there needs to be more routes. And we need to incentivize people to get out of their cars and travel a different way because it is not going to be easy. And we have to use every tool in the toolbox to get people out of their cars. So I think that summarizes my views. Did your boys want to add anything?
Kyura, thanks very much, Marie. And thanks again for coming back in. Do we have any questions for Marie?
Are you using a school bus or is it the public bus system?
It's the public transport system. So these boys go to Akarakopapa, which is 9Ks from, from home. And so they don't actually have the option of, well, you can't just go to your local school. You've got to be prepared to travel if you want the deal. So first of all, we tried driving half the way and then biking, but that's actually a pain. So now we've tried busing, but we have to get 2K to the bus stop that gets them to school. So they're using the public transport system. But wouldn't it be great if they could just get on at their house and then get to their school?
Megan?
I was just going to ask the boys and they might be shy. How do you guys feel about the bus? Do you like the bus or what things could be better about the bus?
Well, it is pretty good, but it's quite annoying that there's, nobody's wearing masks. Yeah.
What about how early you've got to get there?
Yeah, got to wake up early and I never get a sleep in. Because in the weekends I wake up early, so it's hard. So yeah, I want it more often.
Kyura, well, thank you very much, Marie, and to your boys for coming in this afternoon. It's been great to have you back in. I now move Brent Schmack, Smack, Smack? I, you've been sitting patiently at the back corner for a wee while there and I'm very happy to welcome you to the table and take it away when you're ready. The one with the face on it.
Right, I'm Brent Schmack and I'm an arable and livestock farmer in the Heiko Plains catchment. I have a background in rural banking and farm advisory prior to and in conjunction with farming. And I acknowledge as a farmer that intensification of the farming practices, particularly in the last 20 years, has had some negative effects on the environment that we need to address. I'm not going to go through all my submission, but my submission primarily relates to the level of, the proposed level of rate increases. And I don't support either option one or two because the level of rate increases are unaffordable for a great majority of farmers. And I do ask the councillors that they remember that the majority of farmers aren't dairy farmers and aren't receiving a $7 or plus milk payer. In our particular situation, our farm is smaller than average. And we currently have ECAN rates, and this is attached, so I take it the councillors have seen it, of $4,315 per year. And under option one, it's proposed that they go to $7,738. And option two is a wee bit less. So both are unpalatable and unaffordable. I ask the councillors also to please understand it's not just the ECAN rate increases that we're actually facing at the moment. Land and water compliance costs escalating at an alarming rate. We've funded flow meters, telemetry recording, moisture probes, nutrient budgeting, preparation of farmer environment plans and auditing. And I support user pays, but we've had increased consent monitoring and consent renewal costs as well. On top of this, we have district council rate increases, health and safety, and general increases to input costs. In our situation, our costs have gone up 15% in the last 12 months. And ECAN are looking at imposing further costs on us. I understand a big part of this increased cost is being forced on ECAN through central government. So I would ask that ECAN go back to central government and push back on some of these things and see if we can get some acknowledgement for the good work that ECAN and the community has done, putting our plan changes in place and get some delay on having to rewrite these plans. Because I understand a big chunk of the rates increase is going to be the cost of rewriting new plans. So the four key outcomes I'd like to see is pushback to central government so that the cost of rewriting plans doesn't have to happen in the short term. I support increasing the uniform annual general charge, but it needs to go to at least $100. So the increased rates taken is shared more evenly. The use of targeted rates I support, but there needs to be an overriding maximum cap on level of increase that any individual rate payer would face. And I would ask councillors and management of ECAN, run the business in an economically prudent way rather than think they have an open chequebook and can just pass on costs to us. And I'm speaking for our family's own business, that I, there's a lot of other farmers in the rural community that feel that they're being thrown a big share of the rate increases. And we used to have a big disconnect between rural rate payers and ECAN going back some 10 years. The establishment of zone committees and local managers was a huge improvement in the relationship. But I just feel that if we have these recent rate increases forced upon us again, we'll have a level of disconnect established. So I'm happy to answer any. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions if I can, awesome.
Kyra, thanks very much, Brent. But Lauren?
Kyra Brent, thanks for your submission. Um, I just wanted to pick up on your comment about you not supporting ECAN as being a social agency. And you mentioned a few things that you don't think we should be investing in like youth engagement, Enviro Schools and community resilience building. Is it that you, um, think these are worthy things in themselves? You just don't want to see us doing them? Or, or what, what is your, like, who would be there in terms of building community resilience if we weren't going to be investing in that space? Sorry, in your button, just in response.
Um, my primary concern regards all those things that have got to be funded from somewhere. They're very worthy causes. I'd like to think some of them will be funded through central government and the education system as opposed to, um, having to come out of a rating system.
Uh, Liz.
Um, if I may, Madam Chair, could I ask two questions? Um, my first question is, um, you've put here in your submission, um, you'd like to see on-demand public transport services in Ashburton. Is that, is that my way or is that just something that you accidentally put onto your form?
I think I must accidentally pushed the, sorry.
All right, so to my second question, I'll just press that out. Um, so you said that, um, you're talking about dairy farmers, you know, will often get a, a larger, um, income than other types of farmers. Well, um, what are your views about rates rebate, rebates? Um, do you think, you know, that could be targeted to a type of farming or, you know, like that as a way of reducing your rates bill?
Um, can you explain how a rates rebate system might work?
With a rates rebate, you normally apply to have a discount off your rates and that can be on a variety of different, um, for a variety of different reasons.
I'd prefer us to have fear rates struck rather than have to go through that sort of system.
There doesn't appear to be any other questions. So thank you again so much, Brent, for coming up and giving us your time this afternoon. It's great to have you in to speak to your submission. Uh, by my count, that is the last, uh, submission of the day. Uh, so I, yeah, so I will welcome councillor Pauline to close us off. The Karakia, uh, if you want to send your microphone on, please.
Oh, Kyra Tatu, uh, katua ana aho, kitimiha kiakoto, ko tōma nei, i tēneira, uh, ka o atu, uh, tor, uh, koriro, kiama te, i tēneiwa. So just to acknowledge everybody first, especially our arts groups that are still here with us um, for bringing your submissions today and thank you so much for that. To all our councillors that have sat and listened, uh, well done. And to our staff that has supported us, thank you as well. Um, all right, here, Karakia, pakamutunga o tatu, neira. Uh, keatau, na manaki tanga o na me karo, kironga ki te na ki te no tatu. Ko mahe, tahu ma ki ki, keatau te reo, keatau te mana, keatau te aroha, tuturu, fakamoa, kea tina, tāri, haumei e hui e.